Good morning and welcome to the Friday, November the 4th, 2022 edition of the Palm Beach County Planning Commission meeting. I'm going to call this meeting to order. First, if we could, can we please take a roll call? Precious.
Sarah Pardue. John Carr. Rick Stopek.
Here.
Barbara Roth.
Here.
Dagmar Braas.
Here.
Jay Nisberg.
Here.
Penny Pompey.
Here.
Glenn Gromen.
Here.
Spencer Siegel.
Here.
Lori Vineker.
Here.
Kylie Harper Larson. Marcia.
I'm sorry, Carr thinks she's going to be appearing today by WebEx. We're going to talk about that later.
Yes. Marcia Hayden.
Here.
Angela Van.
Here.
Edwin Ferguson. David Searle.
Here.
We have Cora.
Thank you. Let's all rise and do the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and our God, an invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Do we have proof of publication for all the matters before us today?
Good morning. Yes, Chair, we do.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. Let's talk about the, are there any postponements at this time? No postponements?
Correct. No postponement.
Great. So let's go back to the October 14, 2022 minutes, which was in your packet, fellow council members, and do you have, fellow commissioners, and do we have any comments or motions regarding that?
A motion to approve the minutes.
There's a motion to approve. Second. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Hearing none. Moving on, I'm sorry, that was Commissioner Vineker and Commissioner Stopek, who second. Let's get to comments by the public. Any public comments or any non-agenda items that were, then seeing nobody coming to the podium, moving on, comments by the Chair. Thank you for the honor of being able to be your Chairman. I appreciate that. I'm looking forward to moving on our meetings very quickly. At this time, I would like to have a brief moment where I move at this time to allow appearance by WebEx for Commissioner Kylie Harper Larson. It'll come out of my mouth eventually. Kylie Harper Larson. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody against? Hearing none. Welcome. Commissioner, Commissioner, okay, is she there? She's not there yet. Okay. Well, when she does show up. Okay, let's move on to the first hearing that we've got. First one is Trotting Center, FWA.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Commissioners, for the record, Jeff Brophy with WGI.
You get 20.
And we're, we're back again. You saw this back in September for initiation of the text amendment that we had. It was approved unanimously by this board, went to the Board of County Commissioners, where it was unanimously approved there. We're back now with the, with the land use amendment to, to present to you today. If it wants to work. There we go. Okay.
Just to orient everyone again, this is the approximately 106 acres just on the west
side of 441, just south of Heritage Farms Road or Hypoluxo Road. So this is probably one of the most collaborative projects that, that I've been involved with since being here in Palm Beach County. This is something that started back at the beginning of the year when we were looking at this site, which has been looked at for, for many, many years. We, we really wanted to understand what, what the community wanted to see, how we were to interact with the community, being Heritage Farms. And so our first, our first action was to approach Palm Beach County staff to understand what was the best way to, to, to start with our outreach. And so we did speak to staff in January of this year. We did have a meeting with, with Heritage Farms. There was about, actually about 50 or 60 people at the initial meeting back in February. I wish I could say that they welcomed us with open arms. That was not the case. And as well as our meeting with Cobra in regards to the initial, initial proposal. However, since then, we have worked extensively with the community on, through many different meetings, and these are, these are just some of the, the in-person meetings that we had with the community. However, outside of the in-person meetings, it has been Zoom calls, it has been phone calls, it's been a lot of back and forth. We have worked with them extensively in regards to what they wanted to see with the design of the development, how the applications were filed. And so we have worked really hard in regards to both through staff. Ramsey was a, a big part of that process, especially in the early stages. Commissioner, the District Commissioner's Office was a part of that process through the summer as we modified the applications. And, and so we have worked very closely with both staff, with the community, and with the District Commissioner in regards to how this, how we approached this project and ultimately how it was designed. And again, the initial, we've gone through several different iterations of what this site plan should look like and how it was to be presented to the community, ultimately ending on a plan that incorporated some of the things that, obviously, that, that the developer is looking to, to include, but, but also kind of embracing the, the uniqueness of the Heritage Farms area in regard, and I'll go into some of the details in regards to the lot sizes, some of the landscape that we're going to include. So really, we wanted to make sure that this was not just something that, that the, that we were asking for, but something that, that Heritage Farms could embrace with, with kind of the uniqueness of, of the development program. So we have the text amendment to create the Trotting Center overlay within the rural tier. It was important to the Heritage Farms community that we do not pull this out of the rural tier. So we did not, originally, the application was for a tier change to the urban suburban tier. We have modified that, so this is staying within the rural tier. It would allow for the LR2 land use, and we have the concurrent flu amendment before you here today as well. Again, you can see, this is, this is a shot back from 1999. You can see kind of the development as it pushes up against the Florida Turnpike there, where the, the property outlined in red. You can see the start of the development of the area west of the Turnpike as Hypoluxo Road was developed, as well as the expansion of Lions Road, as well as State Road 7. So the infrastructure really wasn't there back in 1999, but as those roads expanded and development continued west, the, the allowance for that infrastructure, whether it be for roadways and/or utilities, started to be put in place. This is 2002. You can see the beginning of the development, the, kind of that western expansion again as, as those, as those roadways were expanded. And ultimately where we are today. You can see the development of kind of those developments across the street, being Isola Bella, Bellagio, Savannah Estates, Valencia Shores, directly across the street from, from the Trotting Center. And these are the land uses that, that were put in place and that those were developed. So we are going to be consistent with that. Actually, we're going to be about 75% of the, the LR2 land use that is on the other side of the street. And the uniqueness of, of this piece of property and the stretch along State Road 7 is that the rural tier really is kind of to the north and to the west of, of this piece. A lot of it is included in Incorporated Wellington, but there is a small stretch of approximately 2,600 linear feet along State Road 7, which has the infrastructure in place in regards to access, in regards to utilities along State Road 7. The, the uniqueness of the Heritage Farms area is kind of the, the area in behind it, directly off of Heritage Farms Road. And, but you can see the frontage of the rural tier along State Road 7 really starts at Lantana Road on the north and goes to the south to kind of our southern property line. The only available developable area is along that 2,600 linear feet that fronts State Road And again, the idea was always to have some relative consistency to the development on the other side of the road. Obviously, we, we have tweaked that as we've gone through the process with the Heritage Farms community, but then create a transitional density between this property and the Heritage Farms community. And outlined in yellow here, that's the, that's the Trotting Center property here. The existing Heritage Farms areas are just to the west, which includes a mix of different lot sizes, some of which are smaller, about .23 acres in, in size, some much larger. I think the interesting fact is that almost half of all of the properties within Heritage Farms are less than five acres in size. And so what we did when we created this was develop a, a plan that would have a gradient density, where our larger lots would be to the west, where we are adjacent to Heritage Farms, and go to a higher density as we get to State Road 7. So we have three acre lots to be compatible with the Heritage Farms folks on the west and go to, go to single-family lots as we get to, to State Road 7. This is just some of the, the verbiage that has been included in the text amendment. Again, in regards to the rural tier, there's not a lot of change, other than including the, the name of the overlay, but we are maintaining the, the same language that's, that's in place today. I, I do want to point out that the rural tier does allow for a, a different types of residential development, which includes, you can see that one through three, the rural residential clusters, variable lot size developments, and PUDs. Currently, the, the one that is approved is the Western Communities Residential Overlay, and we would be just included as a second, being the Trotting Center overlay. These are new objectives that we have included. Really, this, these ones here are just in regards to the boundaries to be isolated to the Trotting Center property. But as we've worked with the community, it was really important to also include language that would require us to develop this as we've, as we've talked about, which again is the gradient density, certain types of native landscape, the access must be off of State Road 7, utilities must be off of State Road 7. So the idea would be that it would isolate the developable potential of the Heritage Farms area to the, to the property along State Road 7. Again, this is just some of the design features. A lot of this, it's, it's great that it's going to be included in, in the overlay, but at the same time, a lot of this is going to be included in, in the zoning requirements in regards to the size of the buffers, in regards to the, the types of landscape. One of them was that the perimeter buffers be completely native. We've worked extensively with the community in regards to what they want to see within those buffers, both along the perimeter, as well as interior to our, to our development. And so this is the proposed master plan. You can see towards the west, kind of in the darker yellow, those are the larger three acre lots. As we go to the east, they will be half acre lots, and as we get towards State Road 7, those will become more traditional, single-family homes. Again, this is just the allowance for the LR2 land use within the rural tier. However, it, it is isolated to, to the Trotting Center property. In regards to the application process, again, we were before you for the initiation here, where we had unanimous approval. We went to the BCC in September, where we also had unanimous approval for the text amendment initiation, before you today for the, the land use and, and the, again, the, the text amendment. We plan on going to the Board at the end of the month here and in February for zoning and final adoption. Staff did support the initiation to provide opportunity for the Board to consider indirect policy. The policy was to move it forward and come, come back to you and before them here in November. Staff does have, they do recommend denial. We, we've talked extensively and worked extensively with staff, and I hate to, to speak for them and throw the word "soft denial," but we've, I, I understand their position in regards to how they feel about, how they feel about the tier, which is why conditions of approval have been drafted in regards, in order for this development to be developed in the manner that we have agreed to with Heritage Farms. Oh. Nobody wanted to call me out while I was doing that? There we go. So the conditions of approval, approval will limit the site to 166 dwelling units, which is approximately 1.6 dwelling units to the acre, so we will be below the two to the acre. No future increases in density are permitted. We cannot use workforce housing bonus density. We cannot use TDRs. And the only issue right now is the issue of the third condition, which is 10% of total units must be workforce housing to be provided on-site. And we understand the, the, the position of staff because of, of direction from the Board in regards to projects within the urban suburban tier. However, the workforce housing and TDR programs are not applicable to the rural tier in which we are in, in which we are staying in. We made a point of making sure that we are not pulling ourselves out of the rural tier into the urban suburban tier. We are remaining within the rural tier. We are, all of our lots will be single-family. Like I said, we're going to range from approximately 70-foot wide lots to three acre lots. So it's not the type of housing that, that would fit within kind of the workforce housing that you've seen before, which is more of kind of the rental and townhome type of development. So the, the workforce housing program does apply for the urban suburban tier, not the rural tier. The housing element, the county shall establish an affordable housing program for all new residential developments within the urban suburban tier only. And densities greater than those indicated in the tables of the comprehensive plan. And as it relates to exurban and rural tiers, TDRs and workforce and affordable housing programs are not listed as exemptions to the maximum density. We cannot utilize the workforce housing bonus density for this property. And in regards to TDRs, you cannot receive them within the rural tier. They have, they are isolated to the urban suburban tier. And the program mandates the provision of workforce housing for all new developments, again, within the, the urban suburban tier. So both embedded within the comp plan and the ULDC is that, that, that the, the workforce housing program is isolated to the, to the urban suburban tier. With that, that closes. I'm, give you five more extra minutes. Happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for the petitioner?
I have one. The workforce housing that you're proposing is workforce housing for rent or workforce housing for sale?
We are not proposing workforce housing on the property.
You say as a condition of approval, workforce housing was one of the conditions of approval, you're not proposing any?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Oh, sorry. Did you have a question for the petitioner?
Yeah, I have a question.
Commissioner Gromen has a question.
Mr. Chairman, usually, we, we let staff do a presentation and then comments following.
Understood. We can, we can go ahead and do, I mean, while he's got a question, can we let him finish that one and then we're going to?
Yeah.
Let's let him finish that one and then we'll do it the way next time. Thank you. Go ahead.
Mr. Brophy, so I noticed that the LR2 zoning designation permits two units per acre, but your, your average is 1.6, and that's based on staff's recommendation of the 166 units?
Actually, the, the 166 was something we worked on with Heritage Farms. That was in agreement with the community. So there, there is no, obviously, 1.6 to the acre land use to go to. So we, we're going to the LR2 land use with the understanding that the, the density is maxed out at the 166 units.
Okay. So that was, that was a collaborative effort with Heritage Farms?
Yes, sir.
Do they support this application?
They support the density of the 166, yes.
Okay. And would it help you in any way if you had more units on the workforce housing side? Because it looked like you originally asked for 211 units.
We, yeah, well, originally, it was actually a lot more than that. I think when, when we first started speaking to them, through the process, it's, it's gotten to the, to the point of the 166, which, which we've agreed to, and, and it works with the size of the units. But, but with where we are now on the types of housing, that, that's the reason for, for the, you know, the inability to provide for the workforce housing.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd like to hear from staff.
Good morning. Stephanie Gregory with the Planning Division. So as Mr. Brophy mentioned, the Planning Commission heard this item in early September for the initiation of the text amendment, which the Board of County Commissioners formally initiated on September 22nd. So the item before you today is the second phase of the request, which has two components. The first is the land use amendment from RR10 to LR2 on the 105-acre site. And the second component of the request includes the text amendment to create an overlay which establishes a traditional density option of up to two units per acre with no ability to use transfer of development rights or workforce housing bonus density. Development and the overlay would also be subject to additional criteria, including specified location boundaries and acreage requirements that are applicable to the subject site only. The text requires the concurrent site plan to demonstrate access onto State Road 7, provide a transition in lot sizes from the smallest located towards State Road 7 to the largest being located on the western property line, and to provide expanded buffers of 30 to 50 feet. The design features proposed by the applicant were the result of many meetings and negotiations between applicant and nearby residents, so we wanted to publicly acknowledge and recognize that effort. In a broader context, though, the text amendment request proposes site-specific changes to the rural tier of the county's managed growth tier system. The rural tier is shown here in green. And the tier system, which was created in 1999 to recognize the diverse geographic regions and lifestyles in the county by establishing tiers that have common densities and intensities. The comprehensive plan recognizes that this tier is experiencing, is experiencing development pressures and contains strategies to protect and enhance these areas by supporting the continuation of rural residential, agricultural, and equestrian uses. One of these strategies is to limit higher densities by establishing one unit per five acres, RR5, as the maximum allowable density in the tier. The comprehensive plan also accommodates special planning areas as needed for specific areas, such as with the Minto West and Indian Trails Grove amendments, which were adapted in 2014 and 2016. Both sites were the subject of a multi-year sector planning process for the central western communities to provide guidance for future development and address land use imbalances while providing for the preservation of agriculture and open space consistent with the goal of the tier. This past, past planning effort provided a significant basis to justify an increased density of .8 and 1.2 units per acre on those parcels. The pocket of the rural tier where the site is located consists of the homeland and Heritage Farms unrecorded subdivisions. The site is within the southern portion of Heritage Farms, which is outlined in red, and is an established rural area with predominantly rural residential, one unit per 10 acres future land use, and supports various residential, equestrian, utilities, institutional, and agricultural uses. There are also limited commercial future land uses consisting of three parcels totaling about 12 acres. So staff's assessment is that the amendment is inconsistent with the goal of the tier, which is to enhance rural settlements and to protect and support agricultural and equestrian uses. The amendment proposes the introduction of an urban land use in an established rural area by exceeding the maximum allowable density of the tier. Although the protect, proposed text amendment provides design features to minimize the impact to adjacent rural residential parcels, the site-specific text amendment proposes changes which impact how density and thus lifestyle choice is demarcated between tiers. In addition, overlays within the comprehensive plan are intended to address a unique geographic area that warrants specific planning strategies. Staff is concerned with increased interest in site-specific overlay requests, which do not provide a comprehensive strategic planning objective and provides exemptions to density limitations within the tier. And in addition, since the adoption of the 1989 comp plan, there have been a few land use amendments proposed in Heritage Farms over the years. As you can see from this chart, staff has consistently recommended denial of requests for urban densities and intensities due to concerns of urban encroachment into this rural area. The only amendment that staff did recommend for was the county-initiated amendment to RR5 for 11 acres within Heritage Farms in order to reflect the existing density pattern. That's for the sites along Barn Road. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. However, should the Board choose to approve the request, there are three proposed conditions of approval. The first is to limit the site to 166 units. The second is to require 10% of the 166 units as workforce housing units to be built on-site, and this is consistent with other density increase requests that have been proposed in the rural tier. And finally, to require that the concurrent zoning and flu adoption be considered on the same day. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. Okay. Counsel, can I have, can we do questions after each witness? We just aren't going to do the?
Well, I, I think we usually have public comment now and then.
That was my, I'm holding those, but would it be more efficient to, for us to just get those questions out and done and then get the public comments and?
I, well, I think it would probably be better to do the public comments first and then you can take all that into consideration when you question applicants and staff.
Thank you. I, I thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay.
So moving on to public comments, I have two public comments card. If Risa McCarr, I apologize if I get your name wrong, Caraner, McCaraner, and if you can correct me, I'd appreciate that. You can go to number one. And Richard Mayrud, if you can go to number two.
Good morning.
Three minutes?
Okay. It's Risa McCarrer, but thank you.
Thank you for correcting me. I appreciate it.
Yeah. So.
Hold on one second. Let's get that straight. We're learning our new jobs. Give me a minute.
Hey, I get it.
Okay.
Okay. So I neither oppose nor approve or whatever this thing. We have worked really hard with them. We don't want any development there, but we have been told that it's coming. And, you know, being able to work with them and make it something that's more palatable for us is extremely important. You guys can't just keep letting people come into restricted areas and build whatever they want. It's bad. It's bad for our lifestyle. And then on the 166 units, yes, please keep it to 166. We made that agreement. For two on workforce housing, it's not required in the urban tier. It's one of the reasons we worked with them, to keep them in there. And you're setting the people up for failure who would be taking on workforce housing in the community. They can't afford the HOA fees, they can't afford the taxes, and, I mean, you guys are just, please, you know, consider the fact that we've worked with them, and we don't want it. We don't want any development in the, any inappropriate development, other than one to 10, but if we have to have it, these guys have worked really hard with us. And, you know, this is, we've come to a pretty decent agreement, so.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayrud.
Richard Mayrud. I live in Heritage Farms.
Mayrud, I apologize.
It's all right. I'm speaking for myself and my wife, Melissa, who cannot be here because of a family emergency. First, a bit of history. We did not ask for this. We've been living in Heritage Farms for quite a while and thought we had good protection with our rural tier through the comprehensive plan. And we quickly were disabused of this fail, of this knowledge. It is not the case. Secondly, you need to look at the maps carefully that were shown up there. The area to the west of Heritage Farms is not Ag. It is the Laxahatchee National Wildlife Refuge, which is part of the, the Everglades World Heritage Site. This is not some, just vacant land. So be aware of that for any future requests. We want the Laxahatchee Refuge preserved. So the developer was told to work with the community, and their first meeting, they proposed 488 units. And I can tell you at that meeting, it was essentially unanimous opposition. That is not acceptable. The small Heritage Farms lots on the map that are used as a justification, that was workforce housing created when Heritage Farms was created for the 10-acre horse lots. Those little lots were the caretakers. This is not something that was cut out later. So that's not justification for saying, well, you know, you've already got it. So, that's not justification for saying, "Well, you know, you've already got it. Take more." Number two, we have worked with these developers for more than seven months in cordial and honest meetings, and we have come to, I think, a solution that minimizes, reduces the impact to us. It's not what we want, but there are many concessions to the community and benefits. So, this is not like any other project. But the detailed plan must be followed to the letter. And one further thing, the overlay for Heritage Farms was meant to be carried at the same time. That has disappeared or has been delayed, and that is a problem, because the overlay was meant to prevent further encroachment and destruction of Heritage Farms. And we did want to have some help with that. We have gotten a small amount, but we'd like to see more. So, as far as the staff report goes, the basic issue is that high density is incompatible in Heritage Farms. Keep that in mind for any future changes. This is it. And so, we have worked with something, but that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have any further public comment cards. I don't see anybody approaching the podium. In that case, I'm going to close the public part of the hearing and ask if anybody on the commission has any questions. Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Van, sorry.
I have one question, more so to the developer. In terms of, you're getting from 11 units, if I can read correctly, to 166. What you can do today, correct me if I'm wrong, what you can do today and what you're providing, and you say workforce housing, given the nature of the environment we in today, may not be appropriate. I know most developers can do what you want, I just leave that at that. But have you offered alternatives to staff in terms of 10% onsite? I mean, basically, you just say you don't want any workforce housing because the Comp Plan says it's not required in that tier, in that area? But I haven't heard anything in terms of you're getting, the number of units you're getting, with the density increase, and you have not offered anything else? Or, I don't know, staff is open to anything else? But I just wanted to hear from the developer, you're just saying 166, that's it?
Morning. Scott Backman, on behalf of the developer. So, yeah, it's been an ongoing conversation. It was a conversation that came up at the county commission meeting as well. As you heard from a couple members of the community, we, at one point, actually had proposed some additional density. We actually worked on reducing some of that density and getting to the 166 units in order to work through this particular issue. I think at one point, we were at about 188 units. Part of that discussion was the issue with regard to workforce housing in the rural tier, and the discussion that it's not necessarily required, and moving the density down to the 166 units. As part of the discussion with the county commission, our client has actually been looking at some alternatives with regard to workforce housing offsite. We're trying to address it because of the issue with actually locating it in this particular area. The fact that we are in the rural tier, the fact that the community really doesn't accommodate workforce housing specifically as it relates to this particular location within the county. So, we're trying to understand it, we're trying to keep our options open, but frankly, it's not something that we've really been focused on as it relates specific to this particular development and these approvals that we're pursuing, given the specific policies and objectives that Jeff outlined as part of the presentation today.
Thank you. Any other?
Yeah.
I didn't get to that side yet, I'll get over there, sorry.
Yeah, my question would be more to staff and legal. So, what I'm hung up on here is, I seem to see that there's a consensus between the homeowners and the developer. I think they've got some common ground that they can work with here. The issue comes back out to the workforce housing. Is it, or is it not legally required? If it is legally required, then the question in my mind becomes, if it's not feasible on this particular site, is there an accommodation that can be made at a relatively proximate offsite location so that all parties can be satisfied and the intent of the law, if you will, can be fulfilled? I get that this is maybe not the best place to put workforce housing, given the financial costs involved and the types of property that it's going to be here. So, I personally need some clarification on, is it, or is it not a legal requirement here, and where could it be put as an alternative?
Sure, great question. So, Article 5, Chapter G of the Unified Land Development Code is where the county's workforce housing program specifications are included, and they are correct that it is only mandatory within the urban suburban tier. But, so, in Chapter G, Section 2, and then subitem D2, has a bullet that says "other tiers," and there it says that workforce housing may be required by the Board of County Commissioners by condition of approval. May, correct. So, staff, consistent with all future land use amendments, when an applicant is seeking an increase in density, in this case, it's a for-sale development, hence the 10% onsite recommendation, but that is correct, that the requirement is only within the urban suburban tier, but it can be required per condition of approval elsewhere.
And if I could add too, we have two instances in the past, two sites that I mentioned, Indian Trails Grove and Minto West, where we, staff, did propose that condition of the 10% onsite in the rural tier. So, it's an established condition of approval. And Brian, did you want to add something?
Yeah, I just, to that point, those also went from an RR10, they were rural tier, they created an overlay, they had significant components that involved public benefits, clustering, open space, and one of the public benefits that was identified in those projects was the provision of workforce housing. They were also in both of those onsite. So, when the county, in its recent history, has looked at creating overlays to allow more intense development in the rural tier, they have provided a 10% onsite requirement. So, that is really where staff is coming from. This is a consistent, when we have looked at changes to policy in less developed areas or less dense areas, when there is a different type of development that is being proposed within them.
So, just a follow-up question then. Would staff be amenable to a 10% workforce housing accommodation offsite, if such an offsite accommodation can be agreed upon by the parties?
Well, our condition would remain, but, you know, obviously, that's up to you all to recommend something different, and it would be a policy of the Board of County Commissioners if they wanted to have it offsite instead of onsite.
Okay.
And if I may, to address that a little bit further, that was a lot of the discussion before the county commission. It did come up at our county commission meeting. I would say, although I wouldn't say there was a full consensus, there were a couple of the county commissioners that were inclined to not have any workforce housing requirement on this property. There were a couple of county commissioners that suggested it is not appropriate onsite. If we were going to look at it, we could look at some creative options to figure out how to potentially provide it offsite. Again, just to reset the table here, as you heard from the members of Heritage Farms, we ended up in this situation by basically taking what would have been a 10% requirement and reducing that density to satisfy the community to get to 166 units. Before any applications were ever submitted to the county, trying to understand and work through a process, as is always encouraged by the Planning Commission, by staff, by county commissioners, so that we are bringing something forward that has, as Jeff said, it's probably the most collaborative development project I've been a part of as well. And so, we ended up at the 166 units with the idea that there were 22 units that would have been required, plus or minus, at 188 units, and pulling them out because we're in the rural tier. And so, just something for consideration, and I think that's why, at the county commission meeting back in September, there was at least an understanding, even from the two commissioners, that were pushing for some workforce housing in accordance with this discussion, to be a little more creative. So, certainly not onsite, we would argue, maybe not even at the 10% number, maybe allowing us to figure out some solutions that are a little bit different, given the uniqueness of this particular property, this particular situation. I do think it is a little bit different than the other two applications, certainly in terms of size and location than this particular location. And so, we understand it's a conversation that's ongoing. It was a recommendation from staff. We intend on having that conversation throughout. My client is absolutely looking at options and alternatives, but we think it's a worthwhile discussion to continue. If the answer is going to be, there is going to be some workforce housing requirement, which is certainly what I'm hearing here, we'd just like to keep the opportunity open to continue exploring those creative alternatives, given the uniqueness of this application. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to move on to Commissioner Roth.
Thank you very much. To staff, what I'm hearing from the residents, and I'm aware of this issue for a very long time, and have spoken privately with the people who live in Heritage Farms, they have worked with the developer, the developer has worked with them. It's been, I think, a very good model. My question is, we keep hearing over and over, "This is it. No more," and I see the smiles. What protection is there for that rural tier, along 441, for Heritage Farms and other such communities to enforce "this is it"?
So, great, great question. So, while this trotting center overlay is specific to this property, there's nothing that prevents someone that owns another piece of property from coming to us and making a similar request. Ms. McCaraner did reference, or, actually, it was Richard, I'm sorry, the Heritage Farms rural overlay. That is still progressing. It was postponed at the previous Board of County Commissioners, so that will be before you in January, and that intends to add another level, or another hurdle for future applications to come in. But to generally sum up the answer, nothing fully stops someone from coming with a future request.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Grohman.
So, a couple of quick questions for staff. Do you know how long this property's been zoned, RR10, approximately? How many years?
At least since the 1989 Comprehensive Plan.
And so, since that zoning designation was in place, have there been, have there been any developments of any residential type on the property?
On the property, no.
So, nothing has happened under this RR10 zoning designation? Residential-wise?
On the site, correct, yeah. None.
And then, so the site ostensibly is used for, I guess, there's a track around the site?
Yeah, it's been a trotting center, a training facility for horses for a number of years.
And that's no longer the case? They're closed?
I would have to ask applicant on that.
Sorry. My client acquired the property, there is a lease in place, but they are in the process of closing up shop, should be closed before the end of the year.
Don't go anywhere, Scott. So, the modality or the methodology of the, of the large acreage was basically for equestrian use, is that correct? Was that the concept behind it? That the reason that the RR10 zoning was in place was to promote, I guess, farmettes or equestrian-type use?
Is that for me or for staff?
No, that's for staff. Would that be, would that be a good approximation?
Well, that, yeah, the equestrian uses is one of the, the rural tier is, one of the main goals, is to promote and support equestrian rural residential lifestyles, so that is why this area was designated in the rural tier.
So, just to continue on, so not a single residential development was developed under that, under that Aegis, right? In this, in this area? In this, on this piece of property?
On this property, no.
Okay, great. And just to follow up, the projects that directly across the street are, in fact, zoned LR2?
Yes, so all of those sites were anticipated to be developed with those land uses. They all developed under their land uses underneath the urban suburban tier, LR2, and I think there's a little bit of LR3 to the south.
Okay. Mr. Backman, can you give me a little bit of insight as to any discussions you've had with the Heritage Farms folks about the use of this property in the future for equestrian use? What their responses or thoughts were? Is that something that they wanted or opposed? Or in your discussion, in the five or six meetings you had, just give me a little bit of background on that?
Five or six is quite the understatement. It's been active, ongoing, almost weekly discussions for the better part of the last eight to 10 months. Yeah, when the conversation first started, honestly, there was certainly a preference for larger lots, as large as we could get, but with the understanding that we're a developer coming in and trying to figure out how to make use of this. We came in, we proposed a typical standard suburban-style community originally, and we couldn't have been further apart. We, at one point, had actually proposed a community that looked very similar to Equus, which is not too far from here, but that didn't really fly either. And where we've arrived, and again, you heard very clearly, that I think it's just been the right process. We do this a lot of the time, and arriving at a place where, if this is going to go forward, this is the right approach. And so, what we've ultimately come to the conclusion of, because of the balance of Heritage Farms, is that the larger lots on the west side of the property, that would be the half-acre lots, everything you saw in basically beige and dark yellow on Jeff's presentation, it's about 40% of the 100-acre property would be allowable for aguses. The other portions of the property would, to some extent as well, but obviously, they're smaller lots, it's a little bit different. And so, within, we're staying within the rural tier, that was a huge, huge issue for the folks within Heritage Farms in order to ensure that we could provide for and accommodate within our HOA documents the allowance of agricultural-related uses, understanding it wouldn't be as open-ended, because this is more of an organized community, but that we would be able to allow for those things by staying in the rural tier. You know, allowing for chickens and other types of animals or growth and things of that nature. So, I don't know if that fully addresses your question?
I didn't have a chicken question, but, okay, I was just, I was just, so there's no compelling force out there from the Heritage Farms folks that this should be equestrian, even though the prior zoning designation suggests?
Sure. In an ideal world, I think they would love to see it that way, but that's, you know, things have changed, the property is being sold for a reason.
And so, your aggregate density you have is 1.6 acres, and that's based on the staff's recommendation, which says right in the staff report that staff should suggest limiting to 166 units. I'll read it to you. "Should the board choose to adopt this amendment, staff recommends a condition limiting the site to 166 units." And that was through agreement with the Heritage Farms. Now, the staff is requesting that you do a workforce housing requirement, but they're also contemporaneously not permitting you any bonus for additional units to do the workforce housing, and that would be directly contrary to what the wishes of the Heritage folks were. Is that a fair?
Yeah, that is exactly right. Yeah, it's exactly right. If I can take that a little further and to go back to what Commissioner Van had mentioned, look, we acknowledge the current land use or allowance or density versus what we're requesting is an increase in density. We understand that. But again, that was within a rural area. We're staying within a rural area, now we're developing a property more standard, right? This is not like a situation where, for example, the essential housing that was just adopted that allows significant increases in density, and to your point, Commissioner, allows you to utilize bonus and TDRs and things of that nature in order to provide for significantly additional density within a submarket that can accommodate that. And there, I think Chair Siegel mentioned this as well, I don't like to discuss financial issues here. It's irrelevant most of the time, but when you take all of those influences into consideration, the workforce housing component associated with this project, and most importantly, from our perspective, the discussions and how we arrived at that 166 units with the community is where the complication arises. Multiple factors just pulling in different directions.
So, you know, I fully support this application, but I also fully support the workforce housing, particularly since I think the major scarcity in workforce housing is more on the for-sale product.
Commissioner Grohman, do you have a question?
And so, yeah, on the line of some of the other statements that were made by some of the other commentators, so...
We're going to have a discussion momentarily.
Yeah, no problem.
Okay. At this time, seeing no further questions, Commissioner Roth.
Mr. Backman, real quick, the developer, if we are not going to do a condition of approval regarding the workforce housing units onsite, you want to do a buyout, or you want to relocate units in a more appropriate area?
So, good question. We are exploring all options, and we'd like the opportunity to have all options available to us. Buyout would certainly be one of those options. We've started looking at the acquisition of other properties and around the county that we could potentially donate. We've started looking at the potential for acquisition of units that could go into the program that we would restrict. Again, it's not like we're ignoring it. We are sitting here... We are sitting here saying we'd like to, for all the different reasons I just mentioned, not do it, but we'd like the opportunity, if there is going to be a condition of approval, to continue exploring various options that might allow us to figure out a way to address it.
All right. And my next question is to the property that's directly on the north side of this, the Yi property. If we do, you know, if it does get approved at the two units to the acre, what can the Yi property come in as that row crop directly to the north of this property? What can, what is the potential for that property? What, I mean, I'm sure it's RR10 right now, but can they come in and do the same thing as this developer is trying to do?
Is that a question for the Commissioner or for staff?
Staff.
Okay, another good question. So, again, I kind of piggyback on my response to Ms. Roth. Because these are, if that comes in as a site-specific overlay similar to what we have before us today, they could, they could request a very similar type thing. That's one of our concerns with these kind of site-specific overlays within the rural tier. It's introducing a land use that is not contemplated in the tier, so they could ask, you know...
Yeah, I did hear the comment loud and clear, staff is concerned about all the site-specific projects and overlays. My last question is that commercial piece that's right there on 441 on the corner, how long has that been designated as commercial, oh?
That was designated in the 1989 Conplan.
In 1989?
Yes.
That, that long ago?
Yes. It was the only commercially designated parcel within Heritage Farms, and then the one that's in the middle section came in in about 2004, and then the one all the way at the kitty-corner north is, was adopted in 2021.
And nobody has ever come forward and tried to do a proposal on that piece of property that...
Right, it's vacant right now.
All right, thank you.
If there's no further questions from the Commission, then I'm gonna look for a motion and then we could have a discussion.
I'll move to approve with staff's recommendations.
Commissioner Gromen has made a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second for this question.
Commissioner Stupick has seconded. Let's begin discussion. Anybody want to start? Let's start at the other end.
I just feel, you know, I know everybody's trying to get this workforce housing, and I don't want to even sound like a broken record, but it's just inappropriate here. I just don't know how the developer could actually construct a house that somebody in workforce housing would be able to afford, that would be of the same architecture and, and look of what the other homes are. I just, you know, financially, I just find it very, very hard to believe. But again, the developer's really been working with the, with the property owners, and first of all, I want to say, Risa, you are amazing. Thank you for bringing in a baby and being a part of this as well. But I just, there's no economic basis. There's, I mean, anybody who buys a workforce housing unit, you know, I just don't think those, I mean, yeah, we got a fire station, you know, but I just don't think it's appropriate, the workforce housing on this site right now. Thank you.
Commissioner Gromen?
So, I support this application, support staff's recommendations. I, I'm in favor of low-density, low-intensity residential development. I think this is probably the best and most compatible fit for this property. What I would, what I would never like to see is something like this get moved into some sort of industrial-type of tier or be broken up. I think that the residential neighborhoods, which are directly across the street from this location, are, show a huge level of compatibility. I give kudos to the developer for working with the Heritage Farms folks and, and dealing with their wishes. And so, again, I fully support the project, residential low density, which is what RL2 is, is entirely appropriate, and I would rather see that than some other strange or crazy use that comes down the road, including industrial or something of that nature.
Thank you. Anybody else on this end?
Yeah, so, is the motion to approve with staff's recommendation?
Yeah.
For workforce housing.
That's your, yeah.
That's my question.
Go ahead. Anybody else? Moving on to the other side, Commissioner Stupick.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I'd also like to compliment the parties for working together to bring this to the point that it is now, and I think you're really, really close to moving it across the finish line here. And I would, I seconded the motion because I wanted to have a discussion. I can't support the motion as it is in front of us at the moment because of the on-site requirement, but I'd really, really like to see as a, as a revision to the amendment, to the motion, I would love to see if we could get the workforce housing off-site somewhere. Off-site, either through acquisition or building. I would not be in favor of a buyout because that just kicks the can down the road. We need the housing. The housing shortage is what's critical here. So, it seems like the parties are very, very close here, and I think it would, well, it's never perfect, but none of this process is perfect. That's why the commissions exist, to go through these processes. So if we could, if Commissioner Gromen might consider revising the motion such that the 10% workforce housing is off-site, either through building or acquisition, then I think it would, something that would make everybody, including the BCC, probably pretty happy. And I think, I think Heritage Farms would be happy because I agree with Commissioner Brock. It's not feasible to put workforce housing on this particular site, but by the same token, I don't think we can ignore the fact that we need this housing and we need to make accommodations for it. So that would be my two cents worth. Thank you.
I don't have any problem revising my motion. I just, I'm not sure the procedure about voting, do we vote on the, on the, on the revision first and then on the main motion?
If you would like to withdraw and revise your motion, I imagine you can do that now.
I'll withdraw and revise my motion to eliminate the 10% workforce housing on-site, and again, I agree with, with my fellow commissioners, it's really not economically feasible. It would be kind of strange to have the, just a little section of workforce housing in there. So I revised my motion accordingly.
So, for clarification, the, the condition would read 10% of the total dwelling units to be provided as off-site workforce housing? That's what you're proposing?
Off-site or as otherwise permitted under the ULC, ULDC.
So that does include exchange and buyout?
Yeah.
Okay, just want to make sure we're clear.
Yes.
My only question, can we specify not a buyout? Can we just specify through, through building or acquisition? Because again, the goal here is to get housing available to, on a workforce basis. The buyout just kicks the can down the road.
The problem with that is that, is that you put the developer in a box of having to like, find some piece of land someplace that's appropriate and meets this 10% requirement.
Agreed.
And it's extremely difficult to do, and we might, we might come back, they might come back to us with some other revision or some other zoning category to try and do that. I just think that deflects, let the county commissioners call, call the shot on that. Give them all their options and let the county commission make the call on that, and they'll tell them one way or another, hey, it's gotta be on-site or not. I'm just saying, leave, leave the option as an alternative and let the county commission make, make, call the shot.
Fair enough.
I heard a second from Commissioner Roth, and I just wanted to make sure that we, can we, just more, one more time so everybody's clear, and maybe we can do this collaboratively. What is the motion?
The motion is to support the application, supporting staff's recommendation with, with the exception of eliminating the 10% workforce housing requirement on-site and as an alternative either to provide the 10% workforce housing off-site or in accordance with the other provisions of the ULDC.
And with the understanding that they, and before you seconded, that would be, they were not getting additional credits for the workforce housing?
Correct.
Okay, now, okay. So, now having a discussion on the current motion, I see Commissioner Vineker's got her hand up.
Yes, hi. I am, yes, I didn't ask any questions. I haven't said much. And it actually came down to exactly what I suggested to Jeff on the phone, was it yesterday? This is very good. I'm happy with that motion. I'm so glad it came out this way. Workforce housing program is only limited to the urban suburban tier, that's true. However, this parcel is one unit per 10 acres, and they, it probably, if you divided it up, it could, maximum with roads can, could be 10, 10-acre farmettes or something like that. Now, because it's one unit per 10 acres, and it's 105.98 acres, so this applicant is getting 166 units. That is, I think, more than enough compensation for that. So, this is, we are making legislative decisions here, and, and we do have essential housing that has already been proposed by the staff in the agricultural reserve tier along Atlantic and Boynton Beach Boulevard. So we see we are getting increased densities. And what I am very happy about is that west of 441, we are not having such increased density with proposing the workforce housing here west of 441 because it would have to be denser and it, and we should keep the density down west of 441. And I see that this is what this project's doing, and I do like the transition from larger parcels near Heritage Farm border to a little, a little bit larger density. So I think that is an excellent proposal, Commissioner Gromen, and, and I'm going to support this.
Commissioner Van?
Well, I agree with the motion that's on the floor. Can I ask Maria one question? What is 100, what is considered 140% of the mean today?
I'm sorry, can you repeat your question?
140% of the mean for workforce housing? What is the average income is that?
It's about $128,000.
For one person?
No, that's the household income. So it could be any number.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yeah, I don't support the motion only because, well, I thought I heard Commissioner Gromen say, well, let's not remove the requirement of, the option of buyout, let the commission, BCC, make the decision. We're an advisory board, so as a matter of fact, they can do whatever they want to do anyway. I think it would be, I think it would be a better position for us to take to say, no, you can't kick the can, the can down the road by simply just throwing a bunch of money at it, and we still don't have any affordable housing. So, in my position, that's the only thing I don't like about the motion, is that you're still allowing whoever to kind of scapegoat around this issue. So we had one of the residents who came with her child say, hey, look, having affordable housing in this community doesn't work. She referenced this, the HOA assessments. I have no idea what those are, but, okay, let's assume there's something that somebody making 128K can't, can't pay. Fine. And you, and Commissioner Brock, I thought I heard you say that an affordable housing unit in this area will look different than the other homes, so it'll be like the, the little ugly stepchild. So I get it, it wouldn't fit from an aesthetic standpoint. But again, why are we allowing anybody to not adhere to the requirement that you create affordable housing? I think you're doing that by saying, hey, you can just pay us off and, you know, leave it to the next, next person. That's my issue with the motion, so I'm gonna vote against it for that reason. Just so we're clear.
Commissioner Isburg, do you have any, any comments? Welcome.
It's good to be with you, and I don't have any comments at the moment. I'm learning this item.
Just from my brief comment, I like the idea of, of having actual building of workforce housing and not the payment of money for workforce housing. And I would add the addition that I would like workforce housing for sale rather than for rent, workforce housing, so that allowing people who are working people to gain equity and potential wealth through homeownership is a, is a, is a great goal, I think that we should be looking for here. So, if there is a, I think leaving it out there where they could just, you know, write the check and move on is something that I, I have a little trouble with as well. I'd like to see actual workforce housing on the books and that are available for people to buy so that our people can, our firemen, our policemen, our teachers can, can come and live in the communities that they work in. So, thank you. Commissioner Brock?
I just want to say one more thing. I mean, I don't want this developer just to be able to say, okay, here's the money, you know, now we're, we're free of our obligation. I would love it if the developer really does not want to build the for-sale units on-site, that there is a way that we could say the developer has to build those 10 workforce housing units as for-sale units somewhere else in the county. I don't want him skating away from that obligation, especially, I really like the for-sale units instead of rentals. Thank you.
Commissioner Stupick, you had to comment while she was talking.
Yeah, well, that was sort of my intent when I brought the topic up a little bit earlier, and Commissioner Gromen kindly revised the motion. At the end of the day, I think we're getting a concession here to move the workforce housing off-site, which didn't exist before. And to Commissioner Ferguson's point, you know, we both agree, I think, that, and others agree, that we'd like to see housing, not money, exchanged here. Since we don't have the teeth to put into that, and ultimately it's a BCC decision, I guess all we can hope for at this point is that, that this board can convey the flavor of that to the BCC when they own to take this in a couple of weeks, unless we want to revise the motion again. That's, Commissioner Gromen?
Well, if I could speak to that, Mrs. Chair. So, again, my concern is flexibility, and if we eliminate the other options in the ULDC, what will happen is people will get up and they'll say, but the planning commission said you had to build the workforce housing units off-site.
I can live with that.
You get what I'm saying? You have to build them off-site, and it may not be, the developer may not be able to do that. So then what happens? You know, we get into these sort of like discussions about that. Let's, let the county commission make the decision. And again, don't, so there's a, there's a, currently there's a bond issue that's pending before the voters. And don't, don't assume that the fact that money that's paid into the affordable housing fund is not going to be used or combined with, with money from that and be, be a plus. So, so just because someone is paying money doesn't necessarily mean it's not going to be used, especially when there's additional money that's going to probably be aggregated with that to make it, make it, make it reasonable. The reason why money hasn't been used to spend on affordable housing is because the buyout, so to speak, has never been a significant amount of money to be able to do a really big project, so it kind of like just sits there. You know, that's, that's what I hear. So, I mean, the board can, can, can do what it wants. I mean, I would, I just would love to have the flexibility of doing it on-site, off-site, you know, pay, pay your fee. I don't know what else, what other requirement, what other options you have in the ULDC. There might be some more, so, you know, if we want to, we've revised the motion, I can, we can do that.
Your motion, would you like to revise it, sir?
Well, if you could do a motion to amend the motion, I'll, yeah.
Can I make a recommendation, sorry?
Certainly.
As far as your motion, could we do it in order of preference in terms of how we make the motion so that we make the board, commission understand that we will refer...
Oh, that's, that's a really great idea.
To for-sale off-site, that's our number one. And then if nothing else, then we...
That's a great idea. I could, I could go along with that. If, Mr. Ferguson, what do you think about that idea?
Yeah. Good.
May I?
Go ahead. No, actually, no, sure. I prefer you not to be able to do the buyout. At some point, we gotta kind of say, we, we either need affordable housing or we don't. And if you're telling me, because you'd have more experience in this area, so I'm honestly kind of relying on your representation over this last year to two now, if you're telling me that basically just throw a little bit of money into this buyout pot, my term, not the county's, but then it doesn't really result in actual affordable housing built, then what's the purpose of the buyout then? It's a joke. So let's just be real about it.
So could I ask staff a question? Do you know how much money this county has in its, in its, in its budget?
$30 million has been committed by various developers in the, in development approval process. $15 million of that has been collected. That, a portion of that money is used for down payment assistance for the purchase of workforce housing units. That is the current...
You know how much of that has been, is there like a run rate on that?
There's about 300 for-sale units that have been sold and transacted, so, and virtually all of them have received down payment assistance, averaging somewhere about, in the mid-teens, average down payment assistance. So 300 times, I don't know, 15, 17,000, something along those lines.
So, so the money has been used for good cause, and actually, the money's been used for good cause for, for purchase rather than rental, so I can't see how, how we could be, we could be harming anybody by having, having a buyout. $30 million will buy you about, you know, 26 units of affordable housing if you took it all at once and built a little project someplace. So, that's what the bond issue is supposed to tackle. So I think, I think that Commissioner's idea about a tiered approach, that our preference would be, would be on-site, then off-site, then buyout, I can revise... be onsite, then off-site, then buyout, I can revise my motion accordingly, assuming that you.
Hold on. Go ahead. We're going to, Commissioner Roth, go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I would be comfortable seconding that again, Commissioner, with one addition, and that is clarification that these be for-sale units. We already have seen at least one application where a transfer of workforce housing units from a for-sale property is, has been moved to that workforce housing obligation being on a rental property. And I would expect most of us do not want to allow that. So if you would consider adding
Absolutely.
that proviso, I could continue to second it, and I think that tiered approach works. Thank you.
So do I have to say this all over?
You would, kindly.
Okay. So motion to approve the application with staff's recommendations, with the exception of the 10% of workforce housing on-site, which would, could be met by a tiered approach to other alternatives, including first preference tier being workforce housing off-site, second-tiered approach being the payments under the ULDC, the workforce contribution. And that's my motion.
Off-site sale.
Oh, I'm sorry. And that would be restricted, and that, thinking my sentence never ended, and that would be restricted to for-sale affordable housing product.
Did we get a motion that we can vote on?
You did, but I don't think that was what the intent was, because there was no mention of the off-site or exchange option.
Right. I think we, well, we said there was no, there was no exchange, or the last part was, there wasn't.
I said off-site. The first tier approach was off-site, second tier was?
Off-site for sale. Second tier is?
Is the payment provisions under the ULDC for affordable housing to be directed toward for-sale product.
Can I read what I think the condition would read based on your recommendation?
Before we do, I just want to say, Ms. Carrier, Ms. Resip, Ms. Carrier?
Read it as.
I saw your hand up in the back. I saw your hand up in the back. I can't let you speak at this time, the public comments are closed, but I appreciate your trying. Thank you.
Okay, so this is how I think this is moving forward. So the zoning development order shall require a minimum of 10%, which would be 17 units of the total dwelling units to be provided as off-site for-sale or in lieu workforce housing units. Is that?
With the preference for off-site.
Yes, so we'll put that in the summary. So the condition can't list that, but we will definitely put that in the summary. That was part of the board discussion and part of the recommendation is that.
Excellent synopsis of my motion.
Okay, great. Thank you.
That is Mr. Christian Gromen's motion that was seconded by Commissioner Roth. Do I hear someone, are we ready to have a roll call?
I'll call a question.
Roll call, please.
Barbara Roth?
Was that me?
Yes. Yes. Laura Vineker?
Yes.
Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Glenn Gromen?
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson?
Yes.
Angela Van?
Yes.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Nope.
Jay Nisberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number A2. Am I hearing from the petitioner on A2? I'm sorry, is there a petitioner on A2? Okay. Oh, you are. There you are. Okay. Hey, listen, that one took us an hour and 15 minutes.
Don't worry, sir. Sir, as my PowerPoint comes up, I'll just talk for a minute. Good morning. My name is Ken Tum. I'm with Urban Design Studio. My address is 610 Clemata Street here today on behalf of Colter Homes. Excited to be here. Just listened to the last hour conversation. Let me start our conversation. We have staff recommendation of approval. You have seen this before and it's initiation for this project. Some of you were on the board about a year ago. You recommended 13-0 to allow for the initiation of the proposal that I'm going to show you today. So the item in front of you today is Crestwind PUD. It's also known as the Fleming Property. It's in the western part of Palm Beach County. It's adjacent to the Arden Project. And let me walk you through a few slides. So here's the subject site on the screen in front of you. You can see the site. It's 446 acres. It's immediately east of Arden. Arden is here on the left. Fleming Property is here on the east. The request that is in front of you, there are several requests, but in essence, request is to do a land use change. The land use change to LR2, meaning two dwelling units per acre on the site. Then also to implement the initiation that you voted on earlier, we're requesting to amend something called GAPO, which is an overlay, GAPO overlay, which is called the Glades Area Protection Overlay, to revise several maps to allow this property to be incorporated in the overlay that allowed for the effectuation of Arden many years ago and the Arden community at the same density of two dwelling units per acre. So here we are in the application process. First, staff has recommend, so going back to phase one, which is the initiation, staff had, staff at that time recommended the initiation, which they still recommend today. And then we came in front of the Planning Commission, oh my, actually 13 months ago, with a unanimous recommendation for initiation for the text amendment. And then also, we had BCC initiation on November 3, 2021. So that's where we are in the process. Today, we're in front of you, in front of the Planning Commission for a future land use amendment and also for the next step in the text amendment. Concurrently filed with that, with this application is a zoning application. While that's not in front of you, that will be in front of the zoning board, but that application is filed, and there is actually a condition of approval of this land use change that we have to do it concurrently, meaning at the end of time, everybody's going to see what's being developed, the text amendment would be changed, the land use would be changed, and also you would see the final plan. So that was one of the recommendations by staff. So the first thing, just a couple of quick things on the layovers. These are the actual map changes that you're voting on today. The first one is extend GAPO. It's the area, the area here in purple. And then this is our property here located to the east called the Fleming Parcel. So we're asking to extend that overlay in that map series LU31. The next map series is a land use change. Arden on the left-hand side is two dwelling units per acre. This is the Economic Development Center. Some of you may know it as the Data Center Potent Site. This is the Commerce Area. And then immediately to the east is our property, and our request is to change that to two dwelling units per acre with a cap at two dwelling units per acre. So a little bit about the development pattern and what's occurred over the course of time. I know some of you have heard this. You just heard the mention of Central Western Sector Plan a few minutes ago. This property was part of that Central Western Sector Plan years ago, back in 2005. At that time, it was proposed to be an employment center. That employment center included both this property and the property adjacent called the Leonard Property. That employment center, if I recall correctly, I mean, it's only 17 years ago, 943,000 square feet was being proposed with 50% on one property and 50% on the other. So this property at that point in time was intended to be developed as an employment center. And then along the way, Arden came along and it became more residential in character. So a lot of things have happened surrounding it over the course of time. Palm Beach County State College, or excuse me, Palm Beach County State College came in the area publics. Arden has been very successful. I don't know if you've had the opportunity to go out to Arden. It's one of my favorite projects I've worked on. It's become very neat. The farm and the whole community concept has gone really well. So a lot of neat things have occurred out there, and the planning, and the planning, all the planning studies done in the county over the last 20 years have indicated development on this parcel. One indicated as residential, one indicated as an employment center. So a little bit about the project that, now, obviously, the project itself is in front of you, but yeah, as a planning commission, you're voting on what is this going to be? So it's 446 acres, two dwelling units per acre, maximum 892, but most importantly, Colter's building a Crestwind Community. What does that mean? Crestwind is a 50, age-restricted community, 55-plus community, so next May I could potentially move in. But it is a 55-plus community, age-restricted, and Colter builds these communities all up and down the East Coast. So just for a quick view of what that looks like, it's a cruise ship, right? So these age-restricted communities are cruise ships for retirees, and that's really kind of the intent of it. This is their project in Lakewood Ranch on the west coast of Florida. Mr. Sapo and Mr. Morton in the audience, they certainly can talk to you a lot more about what's there. But one thing I know, there's pickleball, activities, yoga, all types of good stuff. So this project that will be coming before concurrently to the application will be an age-restricted community, and it'll be kind of this cruise ship design of the Crestwind facility. So there are draft conditions. We are in agreement with three of the draft conditions. I do want to talk about two of them, and they're pretty easy to talk about and go through. So first thing, the first three were, the ones in check, we're okay with. The 892 units, we agree that that would be the cap. Our current zoning application doesn't show 892 units. We're not quite there. We're not able to get all the units on site, so it's going to be less than that. And then I'm going, and then the next, the four and five that we agree with, that we are going to be dedicating right of way for the future Okeechobee Boulevard. It is a 200-foot land area dedication. It's consistent with the land dedication that was done on Arden, so we are agreeing to that. And the fourth, and the fifth one, which we agreed to, is the one that will have a concurrent land use and zoning, so all this comes together at one time, so everybody sees what's happening. The two items I want to talk about are workforce housing, which you just talked about, and then number two, the, and then number two, a buffer on the north side of the project. So the first one is workforce housing. Colter has been working very diligently for this. They recognize, and we're accepting a condition, that 10% of the units that are ultimately built on the site will be, 10% of those units, for, let me use numbers. If we have 850 units, we're going to have 85 units of workforce housing taken somewhere else. So we would have 850 units on site, and then we'd have 85 units somewhere else. And so we are not going to be doing the buyout. That is not what our proposal is. Our proposal is to relocate these units in other spots in the county. Colter has been working very diligently, trying to look at all the other options that are available under the code. The staff is requesting that we build these onsite. Well, this is an age-restricted community. First thing, you cannot build workforce housing in an age-restricted community. The rules do not allow that. It's indicated in your staff report. Staff is suggesting that we construct the workforce housing onsite in a separate pot. We don't think that's a good idea for a couple of reasons. The first reason why we don't think that's a good idea is, it is an age-restricted community, and having workforce housing out front doesn't seem the appropriate use for that cruise ship. Number two, the transportation component, always an important component of workforce housing. This is in the western part of Palm Beach County. There is not a transportation system. There's not a bus line that goes in front of this, or a bus stop that goes in front of this. It is intent, this is a vehicle-oriented car. We think and believe strongly that this should be located in one of the more urban areas. And Colter, you can see on the screen, has been looking diligently. While my arrow didn't go far enough west, we're looking in the tri-city areas for potentially some spots for workforce housing. He's looking in the urban areas within Palm, within the city of West Palm Beach. He's also looking at urban areas within the western part, middle part of Palm Beach County and other areas all throughout the county. So our, we're requesting that we be given the opportunity to do off-site workforce housing. Again, we've eliminated the in lieu of component of this. We would like all the other options available that are allowed under the code. So let me, so the question you always get, well, Ken, you're saying, what are we doing? When does this happen? Let me walk you through the code. It's really important for you to know. There are specific gates within the code or specific boundaries within the code. You can't say we're not going to do this. Here's how it has to happen. Prior to final DRO, prior to final DRO, which is the process after we get a public hearing approval, we have to go to the next step where a plan has to go in and get the stamp on it before we can do anything. You can't get past that gate without knowing where those workforce housing units are going to go. You're not allowed to. That's the rules of the road, specifically identified here. We must identify where it is prior to final DRO. The next question I get a lot is, well, the developers started, they're going to go build units, they're going to do this, they're going to do that. The answer is yes, but here's how it works. 50% of the COs or the houses have to be built prior to the developer reading, achieving 50% of the building permit. So 50 homes have to be built prior to them getting 50% of their building permit. So they're very incentivized to make sure this happens very quickly. The third part of it, when does it end? It ends, at 85% of the building permits, they have to have 100% of the COs, meaning those homes have to be constructed or put in place, depending on what part of the program that you, so specifically outlined within the code. So that's the workforce housing discussion. I'd like to jump to the trail discussion. First thing, staff has put a condition, which we have no issue with in regards to placing a 12-foot trail along the north end of the future, what's called the Crestwind Community. That, Arden has a 12-foot trail here along the north end of their project. You'll see here, we're dedicating the 200-foot of Okeechobee Boulevard. But one of the things I wanted to go over, staff is suggesting specifically by condition within the land use plan amendment, meaning that if we change this, we have to come back to you for any change. I'm going to suggest to you at the end of this conversation that this should probably be more of a zoning condition, that we work in through zoning, because we have to start looking at, staff would like to see the path go this way, right here. I think it makes better sense going to the north along here. This is a 180-foot wide open space that we have separating ourselves from Deer Creek to the north. So, and also in Arden, this is on a berm. This goes underneath a power line. So there's a lot of details that have to be figured out on where this go. My request is not to remove that walkway. We're 100% okay with that walkway. My request is, let's push that to a zoning matter, allow our team and the county team to come together with a plan that makes sense, instead of having it regulated within the ordinance that we'd have to come back and change in front of you. This is a zoning matter, in my opinion. And that is my presentation. I tried to go quick today, sir. I have a, I have a slide, or actually, I had a handout that I gave to the staff. Oh, thank you. Mr. Hertz, I'm sorry, I forgot to introduce Mr. Hertz as part of our team, and of course, Cliff reminded me a very important thing. I didn't talk about transportation and traffic. And traffic is an important item here, and having age-restricted, obviously, is a significant decrease in the amount of trips being dedicated. We had handed to staff a proposed revision to conditions. I don't have that on the screen in front of you, but that would be our request today, and we appreciate your time, and our whole team is here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I agree with that. Bryce Van Horn with the Planning Division. Again, this is the Crestwind PUD, also known as the Fleming Properties Glades Area Protection Overlay or GAPO. You'll hear GAPO a lot today, future land use amendment and text amendment. And again, Mr. Tuma showed you a kind of 30,000-foot view just to orient you to the general location of the property on the, just off Southern Boulevard, west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road. So then, as presented by Mr. Tuma, the subject site, 446 acres, more specifically located approximately one and three-quarter miles west of Seminole Pratt Whitney Road, on the north side of Southern Boulevard, State Road 80. The site is again to the east of and adjacent to the boundaries of the 3,000-acre Glades Area Protection Overlay, the GAPO. It's what you see in the purple stripes, and then I'll, more on the GAPO shortly, but the site is within the rural tier of the county's growth management tier system and the rural service area. So this amendment is a request, again, for a change from rural residential, one unit per 10 acres, future land use, or R10, to low residential, two units per acre, or LR2. And then for this amendment to proceed, of course, there are several components, which include text amendments for expanding the Glades Area Protection Overlay to the east. You see the GAPO again highlighted here in purple. And expansion would extend to the subject site. And then designation, designating the site as a limited urban service area or LUSA. And these two sites, Arden and the EDC site are already designated as limited urban service areas, and the text areas and the text amendments would designate this site as a LUSA, of course. And again, processing of the future land use amendment is part of the component. There is a concurrent zoning application, as mentioned, proposing almost, well, Mr. Tuma said there's 850 units, but the land use is for up to 892, age restricted, single-family units and a rezoning from the agricultural residential to the planned unit development zoning district. And that concurrent zoning application is in fact required in this case in order to comply with county's future land use settlement, traffic policy for future land use amendments. And we have county engineering staff here, if there's any questions related to that. And again, the proposed text amendment, since the county's comprehensive plan does not allow LR2, future land use on the subject site, the proposed accompanying text amendments to the county's comprehensive plan, future land use settlement and map series are necessary and are as follows. You can see those specific changes in Exhibit 1B on page E4 of the report. First, to revise the GAPO policy and map series, special planning areas map, to expand the boundaries of the GAPO eastward, to incorporate the 446-acre subject site within the overlay, to, to revise the rural tier objective and policy to allow for the limited urban service area within the GAPO and, and within the rural tier and allowing for a planned unit development on the site. And to revise two map series, maps, managed growth tier system map and the service area map to depict the subject site as a limited urban service area. And again, surrounding the site to the north is the Deer Run Rural Residential Subdivision of five-acre lots with an RR5, future land use and also in the rural tier. To the east again is the 497-acre property known as the Leonard Property with Fox Trail further east, another rural residential subdivision of five-acre lots. And the Leonard Property has an RR10, future land use and Fox Trail, an RR5, future land use. And both are in the rural tier as well. And then to the south is of course, Southern Boulevard and the districts, South Florida Water Management District, West Palm Beach Canal and the district's storm water treatment area that is within the municipal limits of the Village of Wellington. And then adjacent, as you've heard, is, to the west is the 1,200-acre Arden PUD with an LR2, future land use, which is within the Glades Area Protection Overlay approved and developing with 2,334 units. So as mentioned before by Stephanie, the managed growth tier system was created in 1999 to recognize the diverse geographic regions and lifestyles in the county by establishing tiers that have common densities and intensities. The subject site is currently within the rural tier where the highest allowable density is one unit per five acres. And the map here depicts those areas of the county that are within the rural tier. You see those in green with the site located. And the gray areas are just the municipalities within the county. So the comprehensive plan, again, recognizes that this tier is experiencing development pressures and contains policies to protect and enhance these areas by supporting the continuation of rural residential, agricultural and equestrian uses, but also accommodates special planning areas as needed for specific areas. So since the adoption of the 1989 comprehensive plan, two amendments, as mentioned previously by Stephanie, were adopted in the rural tier which exceeds the RR5. Those are the Minto West and Indian Trail Groves, again, which were adopted in 2014 and 2016. Both of those subject to a multi-year sector planning process previously to provide guidance for future development while addressing land use imbalances within what is known as the 50,000-plus acre central western communities. And so this past planning effort provided a significant basis to justify the increased density on those large parcels. So this map right here shows the boundary of the past sector plan. The sector plan looked at the entire area with a focus on the large undeveloped parcels with the potential to address regional needs, including the Leonard and Fleming properties you see there. The sector plan was adopted, was challenged and ultimately repealed. But the combined Fleming and Leonard parcels were contemplated for a large employment center at that time and the Arden site was included during that effort, but removed to be included in the Glades Area Protection Overlay that proceeded separately. So after repeal of the sector plan, the board directed staff to continue with an overlay known as the central western communities overlay for the former sector plan area to incorporate some of the key planning concepts from the sector plan. That overlay amendment effort contemplated a low-density village center development for the Fleming property. The board, however, ultimately ended the CWC amendment. And you can see on the map here, in the red, the Indian Trail Groves and Minto West properties that were ultimately approved later. Excuse me. So as mentioned, the subject site, and we're getting to the GAPO here, is located adjacent to the east of the Glades Area Protection Overlay. The overlay located on north side of southern, east and west sides of the South Florida Water Management District, LA Canal, beginning approximately two miles west of Seminole Prattley, Pratt Whitney Road and extending for another two miles further west near the area generally known as the 20-mile bend. So the overlay is comprised of over 3,000 acres, about 1,200 on the east and 18 on the, on the west. And so in 2004, after removal from the sector plan, of the 1,200 acres, 1,200-acre property now developing and is the Arden PUD, the Board of County Commissioners adopted county-initiated text amendments creating the GAPO for the 3,000 acres, allowing for the existing uses of the LA reservoir, the FPL power plant on the west side of the LA canal and adopted an associated privately initiated future land use amendment to change the land use from RR10 to LR2 on what is now the Arden site on the east side of the LA canal. At that time, Wellington was considering a voluntary annexation of the Arden property and consideration of two units per acre. So part of the intent of that overlay was to prevent the voluntary annexation of the property into the Village of Wellington, the municipal limits of which were to the south. This effort was part of a multi-part strategy to protect the Everglades Agricultural Area, also known as the EAA, to the west from expansion of urban and suburban intensities and densities. And that supported the county's goals to protect the EAA, specifically those lands designated with agricultural production or AP, future land use. So the GAPO amendment identified the portion of the overlay east of the LA canal as a limited urban service area in order to allow for the development of the 2,000 unit, now a little bit more, about 2,300, planned unit development, now Arden, and required restricted covenants from the property owner to not pursue annexation. So the overlay and the LUSA established, were established with the intent to create a barrier to development proceeding west into the EAA. So again, just to recap, the request is for a change from RR10 to LR2. The future land use settlement and text amendment, text and map series amendments are to expand the GAPO, to include the subject site, to designate it as a limited urban service area. Staff's assessment is that the LR2 is compatible with the surrounding land uses and existing development. With the proposed density comparable to the existing adjacent Arden PUD, the amendment is appropriate given the overall context of the area, the history of the multiple planning efforts to address future development for the property within the central western communities area and is consistent with the purpose of the Glades Area Protection Overlay to focus development east of the LA canal. So as part of staff's recommendation, Mr. Tuma mentioned the conditions. The first, and the specifics are in the exhibit, is generally that the site is limited to 892 units. No, no bonus density is allowed here. It's in the rural tier. That would be based on 55 age-restricted equivalent trips or 89 unrestricted units and 803 age-restricted. The 89 would be 10%, of 892 if the workforce housing is required onsite. And that brings me to condition two, which is similar to the trotting center that we are recommending to provide 10% of the units onsite workforce housing. And the reason we have that alternative condition is because there's a different trip generation for non-age-restricted units versus age-restricted units. The applicant did a traffic analysis for the amendment application based on age-restricted units. So if workforce housing is required onsite, those units would have a higher trip generation. So, which is why the second part of number one has, and also would require an equivalency for those units. If the board decides to transmit those conditions, obviously there would have to be a little, another traffic analysis done to make sure that traffic passes per our policy, 35D long-range traffic policy. condition three, to provide a minimum 50-foot-wide open space trail corridor south of the future Okeechobee Boulevard right-of-way. The right-of-way would be required, Okeechobee right-of-way would be required as part of the development order. Arden has a trail system on the north side. It's a 50-foot open space trail system on the north side and the west side. Those were conditions in the, on the property from the land use amendment. So our, our condition is basically mirroring what the Arden ordinance required. Fourth, to provide for potential vehicular and pedestrian connection to the future extension of Okeechobee. Similarly, Arden was required in the ordinance to provide a connection to the future extension of Okeechobee. We are proposing a similar condition to match that. And all, and finally, that the proposed future land use amendment and the proposed rezoning are considered at the same time. And really, that is a requirement from the long-range traffic analysis in order to meet test. Two part of the traffic analysis, a concurrent zoning application is required to be submitted and reviewed. So that, that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions.
I don't have any comment cards from the public, so I'm going to close the public part of the, the public comment section. And now I'm going to ask a question, sorry, from the left. If anybody has any questions or, or staff or Mr. Tuma. How about I start away down the end? No questions? Okay, I'm moving to the right. Thank you. All right. Sorry. Let's start, let's start on that end. You want to start on that deck?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I thought you said we're starting on the other.
I realized it wasn't fair. I started from here, I missed something there.
Okay.
I was clicking, I'm sorry. Okay. When they came up with the wording for workforce housing, it was my understanding that when you looked at the units, that the workforce housing units would look the same as the non-workforce housing units. Is that still one of the rules?
Yes.
Yes, there's still, oh, I was going to say, yes, there still is language in the code that requires that there be consistency between the non-workforce housing units and the workforce housing units. And then if Maria wanted to.
Assuming they're integrated into the same development. We've had projects that have delivered their workforce units outside and, for example, a pod, and those look different than the market rate units that are elsewhere in the project.
Okay. And the fact that they are selling this project as an active adult community and you're not allowed to do an age restriction on workforce housing, are you allowed to do a separation barrier, a gate or anything from the active adult community, which is age-restricted, to the workforce housing area, which will not be age-restricted?
Yes, we've had several projects that have, again, put essentially a pod of their workforce housing units outside the gate of a project.
Okay, outside the gate of a project. Because if I were going to build in an active adult community with, you know, pickleball and, you know, all that other stuff, and I'm specifically purchasing in a community like this, if I had a non-restricted area and all these wonderful little children were running around my pickleball courts when I'm trying to play pickleball, you know? So you are anticipating, if you do follow through with the condition of approval, to build the workforce housing units onsite, there will more than likely be a gate where these residents will not be allowed to participate in the facilities for the rest of the development.
I do not know how this developer would intend to address that, but I can tell you that that has been done in other projects.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So this, first a question for the applicant. So what are the approximate size of these homes and, and what are they going to sell for?
Boy, great questions. Let me flip through my notes and ask Mr. Morton who'll give me, but I believe the home sizes were 2,400 to 4,000. I'm going to get Mr. Morton who knows the exact answer to that here, sir.
Good morning. Scott Morton with Colter Homes. The approximate size, the lots will be a mix of 50 and 65 foot, excuse me, 55 and 65-foot wide lots and the house sizes will probably range from just around 2,000 square feet to probably 3,600 square feet max.
And, and the price range?
Well, in this economy, it's hard to say where the price ranges will come down right now, but I can tell you, in our Crestwind Palm Beach sits in Westlake, we're currently selling in the fours to six.
And, and what, what is the thought process behind making this an age-restricted community?
Well, that's one of Colter's active adult lifestyle communities. As Ken said, we have numerous of them all up and down Florida, through Georgia, in the Carolinas. It's, it's, you're familiar with Dell webs and, and it's similar concept. And it's just for active adult retirees, 55 and older. I call it their forever home. You know, they move, they, most of them look to downsize. Other Crestwinds, we actually do 40-foot wide lots. We aren't proposing that here because most people, they just want to downsize, have a smaller house. We do have some who have the ego by and want the bigger house, but a lot of them want to downsize. And, and just because, I tell boards all over, just because someone wants small doesn't mean they don't want nice, you know?
So, and I'll preface my question with a, with a, with a bit of a narrative. So one of the things that like, I don't want to have happen in Palm Beach County is for it to become Broward County, Western Broward County with crazy density and whatnot. What is your actual density, units per acre? Is, are you, are you doing the full two units per acre? And so it's not, it's, you're, you're not, you're not below that threshold, you're at that threshold.
We'll probably will not get all 800. We'll probably will not get all 892 lots on, because we have the use of the 65-foot wide lots, and so we'll probably, we'll come under that number.
Okay, all right, thank you. So my next question is for staff. So, can you show me on the map where the Okeechobee road extension is actually going to be located? Because it looks like the Okeechobee dead ends, like, right on top of a residential development, and you'd have to do some kind of, some rather snake-like turns to go where I think the vacant land is, but I'd like to see where that is.
Well, this is a screenshot of the county's thoroughfare map. So, this is the map that shows the future.
Do you have the actual, assuming that this all is done, do you have the right-of-way to actually effectuate that roadway change?
So, I can let Quasi give you the details, but for the Arden property, that area in blue that you see right there.
Right.
Was acquired, conveyed to the county as part of the development order approval for Arden. That is also going to be required as part of the development order for Crestwind.
Okay, but I'm not worried, that looks like, what about the Leonard property and the properties to the east, which are sort of off the screen, which look like people's five-acre homes that are sort of right there? Is there actually enough land for the right-of-way there?
Well, I believe that there was some right-of-way at the south part of Lion Country Safari that was already acquired by the county. So certainly, there are some gaps, and as those properties come in, they would be, like the Leonard property, if it were to come in, would be required to provide a right-of-way, or the county would have to acquire. But I'll let Quasi address.
Yeah, and I have a traffic question, too. So my question is also, what's the differential between 55, your traffic analysis, your differential between a 55 and older community and a regular community, as far as, you know, how you guys view traffic differently?
Yeah, 55-plus community will generate about one-third of the regular, you know, single-family home community trips.
And so, and again, I see the applicant is there. So when this restriction is this 55 and older community, what kind of restrictions are there going to be with regards to third parties, like living or visiting? Because I can tell you straight out that I'm not, I don't really believe that the 55 and older community actually has that much less traffic generated. I've seen from experience that, you know, if you have two members of the family, they have two cars, and they use them, I understand that there's an angle. But what kind of restrictions, let's say my parents.
Commissioner Roman, I apologize. I want to, I'm not trying, I mean, it's an interesting question, and I'm not going to, I don't want to take away from the interesting question, but does it go to the?
It does. Because the traffic, because what, one of the issues, one of the staff's requirements is that they run certain of these approvals concurrently to make sure that they've got traffic concurrency. And I wanted to see what that's all about, and I wanted to see how real it was. So the question stands, what type of restrictions do you have with regards to a bunch of people sort of living with their parents and whatnot?
Oh, okay, now, I'm going. You want to answer it? I understand.
It's not people living in their home. You cannot have someone staying in the home under 55 for extended period of time. And they may be, they're allowed to visit, sure. And one of the misnomers is about 55 active adult, is it's not that they don't drive, it's they can choose when to drive. So, peak hour, that's why your staff noted is about a third of the norms, because they don't have to go out on the road.
So they're talking about AMP, PMP, as opposed to just in general? Okay, all right. That answers my question. I have traffic concerns.
Sure. If I can follow up with that, sir, if you don't mind. One, I mentioned during my presentation that this was defined to be an employment center as part of the sector plan. We did quickly look at the traffic relationship to that. I made some assumptions that 50% of it would be office, excuse me, 25% would be industrial, and 25% would be research. It's a 54% reduction in traffic from what the sector plan had proposed on this site.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, go ahead. So Commissioner Searle.
Thank you. Question is for staff. You know, I know they mentioned that there are other developments that have had, like, these pods or separation with the workforce onsite housing. Has there been 55-plus or active adult communities that have had onsite workforce housing within Palm Beach County?
I'm not aware of any, at least in my time, where we've had a 55 and up community. Not that we wouldn't have required it, I just don't, in my time, have we had an amendment like this.
There's one that has been approved that is a little different. It's actually a five-story building that because of its funding was required to restrict units for seniors, but they restricted, I believe, maybe 85 of the units of the 100 units, and the other 15 were left without restriction so that they could meet their workforce housing requirement on the site. So it's not a pod situation, but it was a set aside within the development.
Thank you.
Commissioner Roth.
Yes?
Can I just ask a quick question since you said, was that a rental community, or was that to own?
No, that's a rental.
Thank you.
If I'm not mistaken, I believe it's a rental, yeah.
Commissioner Roth.
Thank you for that clarification, Ms. Bello. For some of the commissioners who might not have been here a few months ago, in response to, I think, requests from Commissioner Van and from me, the planning director, Ms. Bello, did give us some history on workforce housing, what happens with that buyout money. But, I must compliment Mr. Tuma, because today's presentation was like a case study in that percentage and the timing involved with it. So I thank you, because I've never quite heard that before. Thank you. To staff, a question, please. Ms. Bello, probably, how does the, my understanding in a 55-plus community is that 20% of those 55-plus units may in fact be sold to people who are not yet 55. Am I correct on that? Is there something in Florida that has that? Or must everyone, must 100% of the units in a 55-plus community be 55 and over? One partner, one partner.
I'll defer to the attorney if he has an answer, or to the planning director.
I would probably defer to the developer's attorney on that one, but I think that they're, they do have to sell it to 55 or over.
Mr. Chair.
So there is no percentage where it is allowed? Okay, I'm sorry.
If I may, you're correct. There is a portion that are allowed, that if you do have, one person is 55 and older, and he happens to have a wife who may be only 54, or, you know, she's allowed to live there as well.
30.
Commissioner Ferguson, did you have something you want to add?
I did, I did. Wouldn't that be set forth in the governing documents? It's not like the county can make those changes. Whatever is in the developments, governing documents will say what percentage of any. And you're.
It's a HUD requirement. Yeah, it's a.
But you're saying something different than I think the commissioner asked you. She asks is if there is a percentage of the units that can be sold to people who are under 55. You didn't present something where somebody was being sold. You're saying that one spouse is over 55, 55-plus, and one was under. So that's different, at least as I heard your question. So, just to make sure, we can expedite this. Are 55 and over communities allowed to sell 20%, 10%, 5%, some percent to people who are under the age of 55?
That, no, that's not the way we operate.
I didn't think so either.
Yeah.
So, okay.
I was going to hand it back to, I know Commissioner Vineker had a question, but Commissioner Roth was in the middle of her, so we'll be finished with that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, and if that's it, fine. So, in the case of, my understanding from workforce housing units was that they are not supposed to be, not supposed to look different on the outside. So I'm familiar with 55-plus communities, and the fees, we spoke about this in the prior application, in terms of maintenance and carrying charges, and I would assume if there were a separate pod, that they would be excluded. Did staff consider that they would be excluded from those maintenance HOA carrying fees?
So in referring to, you know, the different pods, so Mr. Tuma actually mentioned Crestwind and Lakewood Ranch, and that's, I lived in Lakewood Ranch before I moved over to the east coast, so very familiar with Lakewood Ranch. And there, there, you know, probably, at this point, it's a massive development. There's probably almost 100 different pods, most of which are gated. So, you know, my hope would be that, yes, if the large component that is the 55 and up would have a certain set of amenities, that would, you know, probably be different than the types of amenities you would see in a non-age-restricted. So, whether or not it's another gated, it could be two gated pods, but we would, you know, hope and assume that those 89 workforce units that are not age-restricted would have a different set of amenities to cater towards that age range of individuals and children.
Thank you. Commissioner Vineker.
Yes, and my question to staff is about condition three, when we're going to be making this motion, that you would like this condition in here. Is there any way that we can word that condition so that it wouldn't have to ever come back to us?
Condition three, so you are, that's the open space trail corridor?
The zoning development order shall include and indicate on the master plan subdivision plan, a minimum 50-foot, because during, while they're working on this site plan, there might be changes and alterations, and Ken said that it might have to come back to us again. Is there some way we can word it? Because this really is a zoning, part of the zoning and the site plan.
So there's two components to which they've provided recommended modification to the condition. I'll start with the latter one. So, we included the condition that it be located south of the Okeechobee Boulevard right-of-way. The reason is, then, the way they had it proposed, the trail would have to cross over the future extension of Okeechobee. So we wanted that straight connection on the south side of Okeechobee, so that you're not having the folks on the trail have to jut across the future extension of that road. And then the minimum 50-foot wide is the other section that they proposed, just striking out minimum of 50-foot wide and just have an open space trail corridor. And that was to provide continuity with the segment to the west along the north side of Arden, and then, which goes then on the west side of Arden. So we view it as an opportunity to eventually, you know, maybe it'll continue further east, but to have that continuous open space trail network. But it is the purview of you as a recommending body. If you wish to go with their striking of the 50-foot wide to have more leverage in what that width may be, again, we would have some concern with that, having to cross over Okeechobee to go to the north side, but that's.
If I could jump in here and provide a little perspective on that, and further some of what Kevin had said. This is a very similar condition as to what was imposed and approved for Highland Dunes, what's now Arden. It was done like this, and there was a condition that said, at the development order stage, you shall show it on the plan, you should do all these things. All we're doing in addition is saying, we think it should be as a policy call to the south side of the future Okeechobee extension, for exactly the reasons that Mr. Fisher had indicated, that we want to, there is a concern for safety. We understand that, you know, we do not have a confirmed alignment. They will go through that, they will dedicate the right-of-way, but that is why we want it. We want to just lock down the rough dimensions. We understand site planning and all that will still take place, it's a separate process from this. But that's why, we're just trying to lock down the location of where that would be.
So if we approve the application with this condition, then we wouldn't, we're okay, we wouldn't have to, it wouldn't have to come back again to this process again, even if they made changes with the zoning? That's my question. And Ken did have an issue with that when we discussed, so is there a suggestion that you had?
I would, I'd go ahead and put up my, I'd like everybody to take a look at the corridor we're discussing, so a slide, if you don't mind, please. Right, so. All right, so on the screen in front of you is Arden on the left side. That's where the 50-foot trail, or excuse me, the 12-foot trail on top of the 50-foot wide buffer, that is on a berm, it's an existing berm. I worked on the approval. And then this is a power line easement here. FPL has a significant power line easement. So there's a power line easement that basically comes from the west county power plant, comes north of Arden, and then goes due south through our property. There's, we've got to figure out this area. What staff is suggesting, that it be 50 feet south of the future Okeechobee Boulevard. What we're suggesting, potentially, I'm not sure if this is the right idea or not yet, is that it could go north. There's a lot of existing vegetation, we're dedicating almost 150 feet of land in the north as open space. It seems to me that that makes better location sense for it. And the same thing, let's pretend down the road, Leonard, the road goes right through this way, right? So wouldn't it make sense to have that, potentially have that trail system on the north side? And I understand exactly what Mr. Fisher just said, we don't want people to cross Okeechobee Boulevard. But ultimately, if the plan for this is to get the Lion Country Safari, by the way, there is no plan of trail systems, because I've looked through all the county maps, if it is to get the Lion Country Safari, it has to cross Okeechobee Boulevard someday down the road anyways. I think it makes sense for it to go here. But like, there's a lot of discussion here and time to figure this out. We may not agree today, we may agree by the time we get to the zoning commission, but if you place it in this planning, we don't have the opportunity to change it. I'm not arguing that we're not going to have a path. We agree. I mean, 100% of our client is on board. Can I tell you that it might not be 49 feet going through the middle of the FPL easement? That's the reason why I'm nervous about locking down at 50 feet, but we're not trying to reduce it. In fact, we're actually trying to increase the area that's available by having it on the north side.
If we just removed the 50 feet, then it would not ever come back to us, then? And it would just be, it would just be taken care of at zoning level? Is that what the point is? But staff, but planning staff has an issue with that? Is that what, is that correct?
Are you proposing removing the condition for the 50-foot trail altogether, or just the portion of the condition that requires it on the south side of Okeechobee extension?
Yeah, so we're, sorry, madam.
I know this is, this is an issue with the developer, and I just wanted to get it straightened out, the best way we can do it so that we're protected, the county's protected, and also, the developer, it appears that this is a, this is a site plan issue that should be considered with zoning, and why are we doing this? We haven't, historically, don't usually do this, impose paths and 50-foot buffers and all. Did you, go ahead.
I hope I can make this easier for, oh, go ahead, sir.
No, no, I'm sorry, I didn't know if the question was over.
My question is, should we, is this, where the staff is suggesting that we vote for this wording exactly, and that's it?
I think we could talk about that in discussion, let's get the.
That's, well, my question is, if we have to make the motion.
Well, we're not ready yet. Commissioner Van, I apologize, but I saw Commissioner Nisberg, his hand was up first.
Thank you, Chairman. I was just going to deviate back to a different perspective, so why don't I hold my question until we see where this dialogue goes?
We want to go to, you can save it for discussion, and we're going to discuss it afterwards. Commissioner Van, go right ahead.
Quick question for staff. I understand your issue is making sure you get a minimum 50-foot wide path. You want 50 feet wide, regardless of where it goes, you want 50-feet-wide path, correct?
Right, the path itself, I think, you know, Arden is 12 feet, but a 50-foot wide area for it, yeah.
50-foot wide area. And I understand the issue with north-south, and I kind of do agree, crossing Okeechobee Boulevard at some point in time is, could be dangerous even out there. But my question with staff and with the developer, could you do a minimum maximum? Maximum, a range, 40 to 50, and that way gives a larger range, so you get what you want between 40 and 50?
I'll make this a lot easier. I'll make this a lot easier. The developer came up to me and said, Ken, we'll make this at 50 feet, no matter what. So, 50 feet, if we could remove the word north, we would be acceptable, of south, ah, sorry.
We recognize Commissioner Ferguson.
Sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Tuma, I just want to be clear that I follow you correctly. By the way, I spoke with.
By the way, I spoke with, with Mr. Toome regarding this agenda item, and I think he has another one coming up later, just to kind of get that all out. As far as the affordable housing, you want to build it off-site, correct?
Correct, that's correct. We are eliminating the in lieu of option, and we are, yes, sir.
And then as far as what the sale price for that affordable home would be, the gentleman who was next to you, I believe he's the, the owner of the...
He's a developer, yes, sir.
Developer, yes. He stated that the homes in this community would range somewhere between 400K and 600K. Did I, did I hear him correctly? I think, I think I'm seeing nods and...
Let him address that.
I was saying, I'm not sure what the home prices will be in, at the time in this development.
Like if it were made today?
I'm saying that's the price range we're selling just up the road in Westlake.
Okay. Now, what would the, what would the affordable homes, what would their rate, sale price be?
Well, they're set, they're set by a percentage of the, of the, of the median income for the area.
All right, so then, maybe I should ask a question to the staff. Could I have, ma'am, would you, fine? So the homes in this area are somewhere between 2,000 square feet, and I think I heard 3,600, but I'm more focused on the 2,000 square foot house. What would, what do you estimate that sale price to be?
The maximum that a workforce housing unit could sell for this year is, I believe, $297,000.
And so this developer would, would be agreeing to, again, I know the home is not going to be built this year, but if it were, it, the developer is agreeing to build those 85 homes at a rate, a sale price of no more than 297?
The requirement would actually spread them out over three income categories, and so that would be the highest selling, and it would go down from there. There are two other categories below that.
Did I, did I not say no more than 297? I'm speaking...
That's correct. I just want to make sure all 80 whatever could not, would not be sold at, at that amount.
But under, okay. So, yeah, this is, so, thank you. I don't have any questions. I'll save everything else for discussion. Thank you, everybody. I support this application, by the way.
Thank you, Commissioner. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to ask for a motion.
I'll move to approve, subject to the staff's recommendations for purposes of discussion.
Thank you. That's Mr. Gromen. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second for Mr. Searle. Let's have a discussion. Let's start all the way at the end.
I just want to follow up on Commissioner Ferguson's question to the developer. We understand that the cost of the unit is fixed by, by code.
Mr. Nisberg, I apologize. This was, the questions were for before. We can continue the questions if you weren't, if you were...
No.
Are you making a comment or a question?
I was trying to do both, I guess.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll go back to the questions, since we're not, we have a question.
Let me, let me hold it. All right, let's just...
No, no, if you want to, if you want to ask a question, go right ahead. I was just...
I just wanted to know if there was a correlation between the cost that was quoted to Mr. Commissioner Ferguson and the square footage of the affordable housing. The code isn't clear on that.
Is that a question for staff?
I can jump in real quick. So the code for the workforce housing sales price doesn't speak to square footage.
Right.
As Ms. Bello mentioned, 297, 990,000 is the max sales price in the top bracket. So if we go to the 60 to 80% range, which about a third of the units would have to be in that bracket, the sales price for those would be 189,630. In the second bracket, up 80 to 100, it would be 243,810. And then that third top bracket would be that, not 297,000.
And I understand the clarification on the cost. My question was the size, the square footage of the units.
Yeah, the, our code doesn't speak to the square footage for the workforce housing units.
Thank you. Now, now we're on discussion, as to the motion. Starting with, you want to discuss anything about that? You want to make a comment about the motion? Okay, Commissioner Ferguson, do you have any...
This is, this is why I think we should support this application, because this is the first applicant that I can think of in the year plus, or more than, what am I talking about? The years that I've been up here, where they've been definitive in terms of their commitment to actually building an affordable unit out of the ground, not this poppycock about buying out and putting money into a fund, which with all due respect, I guess not would be the appropriate time. Doing a little math here, only 15% of that money has been used to help people buy homes. And I've been doing closings in this area for quite some time now, and the cost of sale prices have, have gone through the roof. Commissioner Searle can speak to this as well. So it seems to me that if we really are committed toward building and putting people into affordable homes, that this is the way to go. Not again, this, again, poppycock, it's my Friday, my Friday bad word, just throwing money at a, at a fund that's going to be used slowly. No offense to anybody here, I mean, the system doesn't work so well in regard to that second mortgage, getting people approved. I can tell you as, as again, as a title agent, it is a headache to work with the county in that regard. So I would much rather have somebody like this developer who is taking the time to basically talk to us like we're five-year-olds for a change, which I appreciate, but sometimes I do feel like one with two six and four-year-olds in my house, making it very simple, but then also getting to the root of the matter, which is, we have a housing shortage here. And again, persons who are making 128K are never going to really realistically be able to buy a home with financing at 400 and 500K. It's just not going to work. Even with that other 25 million, I'm sorry, that other, she said four and a half, so that other 24, whatever it is on the day, 25 and a half million that's still sitting in that fund, that's never going to, is never going to help them make ends meet. So what they're doing, I think, is great. So we know it's going to be a home. I appreciate that over the three years, the, the price might go up to 350 or whatever. I know prices are going down now, but I like this better where actually finally a developer that has the, has the commitment to the community to actually build a home, and then we know then that that person, that, that first responder, that teacher, that whomever, is, has a realistic chance at actually getting a real piece of the American dream, not just simply paying rent for the next 20 and 30 years. So again, I hope that the majority of the commission supports this. Again, I applaud you all for putting something forward that's real for a change, and I encourage any other developers who happen to see this at a future date, to try to follow this pattern, because I think this is something that Palm Beach County and the state of Florida greatly needs. Thank you.
Point of, point of clarification, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead.
The motion is to approve the project with staff's recommendation, which is building the workforce housing units on-site.
Correct.
Or what the developer's representative has stated as far as they are looking for locations to actually build these units, but not on-site. What, what is the motion?
The motion is, the motion is, the motion is to approve the application, subject to staff's recommendations. Staff recommendation number two says that the workforce housing units would be on-site, which I plan to address in discussion, but, but we haven't gotten to that point yet.
Then I actually would oppose that motion, because the only example that we received from staff is in regard to a rental community, and it's not the same. It's not apples to apples. So in that regard, I would have to oppose the motion as, as presented.
When permitted, I, I just wanted to discuss the, the on-site first of all.
And again, I agree with Commissioner Ferguson, that, I disagree with that. I think it should be off-site, and, and I do applaud culture, because I've seen some of the products they have built, they've done some in city of West Palm Beach and all, and some of the products that's been built for workforce housing from the county, that's been built in the city. So I think I agree with Commissioner Ferguson that it should be something off-site and somewhere, maybe spread throughout the county, not necessarily in one area, because you've got 89, 90 units, which is a large amount for sale. And I want to make sure it doesn't say that, and I think that's the indication. I want to make sure the condition says for-sale units, because it didn't say that. I'm assuming that's what we all assume, and it's going to be for sale, but I want to make sure it says for-sale as far as the condition. Can we come to that?
Commissioner Vineker.
Yes, I, I agree to, I approve, would approve to expanding the Glades area protection overlay eastward. I think that, that is good infill. So I support that, and I support the limitation, maximum number of units. As I support the 10% dwelling units, total of the dwelling units, to be built as for-sale units, but off-site. I think that the, the developer did a good job of showing us everything that's a good plan for working that out, to be off-site. And this, as far as condition number three, I think that it's good, staff was concerned about the 50-foot wide opening space trail corridor. I would prefer to have the wording in this condition just saying located along the Okeechobee Boulevard right-of-way, and let staff work with zoning staff and planning staff and the developer work together to decide what side of Okeechobee Boulevard, whatever, but we know we're going to get that 50-foot wide. I would prefer that, but if, if that, if that "south of" doesn't get removed, I mean, it's not a deal breaker for me, but I'd just like to see this, so it won't, won't come back to us that we would have to change, and this, this whole thing would have to come back to us again if they did put it on the north side. So if we just said along Okeechobee Boulevard, that might be better. And, and that's, and the extension, of course.
Commissioner Ferguson, you have something?
Thank you. Briefly, I'd like to make a substitute motion then, that we approve the application with the contingents, or with the, with the requirement that the right-of-way be built, a 50-foot right-of-way be built along the Okeechobee Boulevard corridor, and also that the developer be permitted to build workforce housing off-site. For-sale workforce housing off-site.
Not permitted, but...
So, sorry, be required to build workforce housing for-sale off-site.
So, Mr. Chair, point of order.
Hold on a second.
Point of order.
One second. Do I have a second for this motion?
No, you, no, point of order. You, you have a motion on the floor, which was put out for discussion, and I'm not disagreeing with anything Mr. Ferguson has to say. We have not finished discussion on the motion on the floor that we have for discussion. When we finish that, then we can do an alternative.
I understand that I can still accept a substitute motion at this point, and I can, we can vote on both if necessary, so...
Yeah, but we didn't finish discussion on the original motion.
I appreciate your comments, but I'm going to go right now and say, Mr. Ferguson has made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
That is a second. So now that we have that, we can continue the discussions. Mr. Stopek.
My comment is very easy. The north-south part of the buffer doesn't really concern me as much, because it would seem to me that at whatever point in time, Okeechobee Boulevard gets extended, you could always build a tunnel beneath Okeechobee Boulevard, much like exists in the Binks Forest area. For many, many years now, there's been a, probably a 120, 130-foot tunnel that runs underneath Binks Forest Drive to connect one side of the golf course to the other. So I'm not going to be hung up on whether it's north or south, because there's, there's a workaround for that, in my opinion. Otherwise, I do support this project.
Commissioner Roth.
Yes, I, I support this, the motion by Mr. Ferguson, which I seconded. Again, compliments for the tutorial on the timing. I think that is very, very clear, the first time that I have heard it. I thank the applicant for that, and I very much agree. Thank you, Commissioner Vineker, for working on that buffer issue so that it doesn't have to come back to us, it can be worked out by zoning. And I will support this motion by Mr. Ferguson. Thank you.
Any other comments? Commissioner Searle, Commissioner Hayden, either one of you? Mr. Gromen.
So just pointing the record into, to make a record. So it was inappropriate to have a second motion when the pending motion on the floor, per Roberts Rules of Order. That being said, what I, what, before discussion was had, I made a motion to approve, subject to the staff's recommendations, for purposes of discussion. That discussion never was finished, so I, hopefully I can finish it. And, and that was, I, all I wanted to do was hear what people's thoughts were about building, building on-site versus off-site. I too agree with Mr. Ferguson that the, the unit should be built off-site. I merely made the motion for purposes of discussion. And I also, I also agree with Ms. Vineker on the, on the, on the right-of-way scenario, although I would say that the, that if you've got a 50-foot buffer or right-of-way on the property directly next to you, it should directly connect, and it should be sort of as much as in a straight line as possible. So, so that being said, okay, we need to correct the procedure in this. And so in order to correct the procedure, I'm going to withdraw my motion and support Mr. Ferguson's motion, and then we can actually do things the right way and have a vote on it.
I, I did have no doubts that you understand, that's what was your intention. I just thought that his motion was well-stated, and we needed to get...
I know, but we still need to follow the rules.
Commissioner Roth, did we have any more comments? Fantastic. Can I call the question? Roll call, please.
No, I, I was just saying that what Commissioner Ferguson did was, was appropriate and under the rules, Roberts Rules of Order. So however you want to handle it.
I, I just did.
Okay, very good.
Roll call, please.
Barbara Roth.
Yes.
Laurie Vineker.
Yes.
Spencer Siegel.
Yes.
Dagmar Bros.
Yes.
Glenn Gromen.
Yes.
Kylie Harper Larson. Angela Van.
Yes.
Marcia Hayden.
Yes.
Rick Stopek.
Yes.
David Searle.
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson.
Yes.
Jay Nisberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. At this time, fellow commissioners, I've noticed, and I've been on this commission for a couple of times, first of all, we do this for hours, and we never take a break. Would anybody at this time like a five-minute break?
Sure.
Thank you. We're going to have a five-minute break.
You have to make a motion.
And by the way, and not for nothing, but there's, there's not, there's no, there's no food, and there's no water. So, you know, the conditions could be better.
But where is the vending machine?
No, it does, no vending machine. It doesn't work.
I know. Like the county attorney is like...
Our application went to 113 residential units. And the condition that is in front of you today says you shall build those workforce housing units onsite. That required us to build 39 and also to buy 39 TDRs. So, as you know, we've been working with all the communities. I mean, that was the direction after the denial of this application. We spent a lot of time, Paul's here, and our, and other members of Lake Worth Road Coalition, working, working through it. So, we had our original proposal based on the left one. On the right one, we, was the what staff recommended. Well, we found the middle ground, which is pretty close to what, what staff's recommendation is, but it's consistent with what the neighborhood groups, and also, most importantly, it's actually building units. So, the middle, which is the request that we're asking, and we're requesting the change in conditions to matches, I'm not going to drag you through all the words, but basically, we're asking to do a land use change from LR1 to LR2, which we're doing. The second one is we're going to 117 units. That's four more than where we started, and neighbors are okay with that. And then, we're going to do 30% workforce housing bonus. So, we're using the workforce housing density program, allowing a bonus of 30%, which equates to 22 units. We would then be purchasing 21 TDRs, and that was a sticking point with staff. Staff wanted us to buy all TDRs and not use the workforce housing ordinance. We want to be able to buy the TDR, or, excuse me, we want to split that in the middle, which is, in essence, what we did. So, that equates to 14% workforce housing. But here's the good part. Those nine workforce housing units will be built onsite. Those will be townhomes. They'll be low and in the, low and mid 1 category. And then, offsite, we have five single-family homes that Pulte is constructing in, in the area of Delray Beach. They are constructing those home, and those will both also be in the low and the mid. So, we have a total of 14 units. So, I think we did a good job here trying to spread, trying to thread the needle to try to keep everyone onboard with the project. And just to show you kind of a general idea of where those workforce housings, I know it's important to some of you, where are they being built? Well, nine of them are going to be, be built here, and five are going to be right here. This is West Atlantic Avenue. And as I said earlier, those are full-size home, 1,447 feet to 2,068. The two-story model is incorrect. It is a one-story model. I grabbed the wrong one, but the other two are the actual homes that are being built. So, our proposed revisions, our proposed revisions are on the screen in front of you. First thing, eliminating the word "all onsite." We're, we're splitting, we're doing nine onsite. So, the request is, instead of 16%, that 14% of the total dwelling units to be built as workforce housing units. We agree. And that we would have a total of 21 TDRs instead of 43. And then, the bottom line says the minimum number of workforce housing required by the ordinance. So, that, that's really our request. Lot of words, but we want to get to is the middle ground here. And that is our presentation. Again, Tyler's here to answer any questions you have, because he's, knows a lot more about it than I do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
We're going to hear our presentation from staff.
Hunter's crossing in front of you, presenting Ernest Fitchuk with the planning division. Okay. The amendment requests to change future land use designation from low residential one unit per acre to low residential two unit per acre, per acre on 36.9 acres, for a total of 117 units with additional density bonuses requested through zoning application. The slide shows the land use surrounding the subject site, and it's, it's, the surrounding area consists of single-family developments on northeast and south with low residential one, two, and three land use designations, as well as commercial to the west on north and south side of Lake Worth Road. This is another view of the site facing east showing the Lake Worth Road corridor. Very brief history. The site was subject to several prior land use amendments request. One was for a lifestyle commercial center with a commercial low, with underlying eight that consisted of mixed uses, and request was withdrawn. Two recent requests were for residential density increases. One was denied at the transmittal hearing, and the second one was withdrawn. There are more details in the staff report. The latest request was originally for a combination of LR2 and LR3, and was scheduled for September Planning Commission meeting. The applicant requested postponement and modified the request to include only low residential two units per acre over the whole site, which is item before the planning commission today. Requested LR2 would result in a base density of 74 units. The concurrent zoning application is requesting 21 TDRs and a workforce housing density bonus of 22 units, for a total of 117 units and a 3.17 unit per acre overall density. The use on the site will consist of zero lot lines, single-family homes, and nine This slide shows the application site located on the left side of the West Lake Road neighborhood plan map. The neighborhood plan identified desired densities, but recognized that property owners could seek density increases through amendments or through the county density bonus programs. Board of County Commissioners acknowledged the plan and gave a special exemption from the use of TDRs for projects that thought a density increases that was identified in and supported by the neighborhood plan. The requested LR2 with TDR and workforce housing program density bonuses results in overall density of 3.17, which exceeds densities identified in the neighborhood plan. Therefore, this amendment is not exempt from the policy 24B that requires use of available TDRs at the mandatory method for density increases. The staff assessment is, the proposed overall density is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The site is located within urban suburban tier along a major arterial roadway, and the proposed type of housing are compatible to surrounding single-family houses. Additionally, staff recognizes that the applicant has been working with the community and gained their support. However, the proposal is inconsistent with the policy 24B that establishes the TDRs as a mandatory method for increasing density. The request is not exempt from the mandatory TDR provisions, because the proposed overall density exceeds densities identified by the neighborhood plan. The requested 117 units can be attained with the requested LR2 and all available TDRs, in this case, 43. Finally, the applicant's proposal assumes workforce housing program obligation that is associated with the limited incentive option of the workforce housing program. The limited incentive is available to projects that already have future land use designation and are not seeking to maximize the development potential. This project doesn't have the requested LR2, and is going through the amendment process to increase, actually double the base density, and then seeking additional, additional densities through density bonus programs. Therefore, the lower limited incentive percentage are not applicable. This is a table that is comparing what is applicant proposal and what staff is recommending. So, land use is low residential two units per acre. Applicant is requesting additional density bonuses through two programs, 21 units through TDRs and 22 units through workforce housing program. Staff is recommending to purchase all additional density as TDRs, and staff is recommending 19 units calculated based on the full incentive option, and recommending all 19 units to be onsite. And per applicant request, with the use of limited incentives, the workforce housing obligation would be 14 units, and applicant is proposing nine units onsite and five units offsite. So, the staff is recommending approval with modifications. Maximum of 117 dwelling units with no further density bonuses increases, 16% of all units to be built as workforce housing onsite, requiring purchase of 43 TDRs, and requiring the adoption of the proposed land use amendment and zoning application at the same public hearing, and motion to approve with modifications.
Does that complete your?
Yes, yes, it completes my presentation. Sorry.
Okay. Do we have, before we get to the public hearing, do we have any questions for staff or the Seeing none, I'm going to start the public comments. I'm going to start with Riza McCarran. Riza, Risa?
She was here for the.
I know she was here for the, she was here, she also has a card for 383.
Oh.
But she's, okay. Mr. Borstetler, Paul Borstetler, please come up to number one. Mr. Biggs.
Mr. Chair, point of order. So, when the cards are, the app, the people who give you cards are no-shows. They do have a provision in the card that see whether they support or oppose. I think we should read those on the record.
It doesn't say on, actually, it does say oppose in the upper right-hand corner. It was checked off, and you're right, I didn't see that.
Thank you.
Thank you for pointing that out. She, she did wish to speak, though, and she's not here. So, let's start with Mr. Borstetler.
Okay.
Borstetler, I apologize, I messed up your name.
Bursler.
Yeah.
My wife can't even pronounce it after 35 years, so don't worry about it. Anyways, well, my name is Paul Bursler, and I am the president of Legend Lake Estates Homeowners Association. And we have a quite, quite a history of opposing developers and developments on this Hendricks property over the last 15 years. What is different about this particular development, potential development, is that Pulte reached out to us from the very start. They communicated well with us. They listened to all of our concerns, and the site plan, they have made seven revised site plans, all based on our request. So, I guess the bottom line, what I'm telling you, is that we do approve this project. And, any questions?
Appreciate it. I mean, if you had more, please, I didn't want you to interrupt you.
No, no, I'm not.
Okay, if you're done, then Mr. Biggs, please.
Yes, Brad Biggs. I also live there, and we're both on the board. We brought this in front of the board. We all support it. We've actually signed an agreement about it. And the other thing, I do support Mr. Tuma's changes to that regarding the workforce housing. If, when it was suggested, finally at the end, that there had to be some onsite, we thought they should be located at the northwest portion, which is next to commercial. It's also next to the entrance roadway. It would have the least amount of impact to our community, and we've been through this, as you know, over the last couple of years, and you know what our community looks like, and you've seen drone views of it. And we think that this will work just fine, and we have lots of buffers and things that have been set up, and can't say enough nice things about Pulte and Ken. So, we think you should support that, along with Mr. Tuma's suggestions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs. I have no further comment cards. I'm going to close the public part of the, the public comments, and I'm going to ask for, let's start with a questions. Do we have any questions or anything else that we didn't catch to before?
Mr. Chair, I have the recommendation letter from Lake Worth Road Coalition.
Yes.
That, and, which I guess they wanted to submit on the, on the record.
Right.
The problem is, the letter is not signed. I don't know if Patrick Wilson is here or not, but it's an unexecuted letter, and I don't know what we should do with the actual document as far as putting it on the record.
May I address the board? Paul got the letter this morning at 7:30 in the morning. Maybe you should come up and verify that Patrick was the one who authored the letter. Yeah, he, he got the letter from them this morning.
Mr. Borstetler, thank you for coming back. If you could just tell me about this letter that you got.
Sure.
It looks like an email, really, or something like that, yeah?
Yes, but Patrick Wilson did come to my house this morning at 7:30 and personally hand that to me, and he is the author of that.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay.
I have that letter here, in case anybody's looking for it later. Any, so, is there any more questions, or can we move to get a motion? A motion to approve, somebody?
I would move to accept it as submitted and discussed with the modifications that staff has proposed. Agreed to by the applicant.
Second. So, Commissioner Stopek has had a motion to approve as required, as suggested by staff, and.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make.
And Mr. Ferguson was the second.
I would like to make an alternate motion to accept this as per the recommendations and requests of the applicant, which were presented just a few minutes ago, and also supported by the local.
Okay, so, we have two motions. Is there a second for that motion? Mr., Mr. Searle?
Second. I meant to support that one already, got her. Sorry about that. Yeah, I second that motion. Sorry.
Okay, well, all right, well, we've got three seconds, so we're going to go with Mr. Searle's was the second.
I love it, that's good.
Dagmar was the one right after her.
It does.
Okay. So, that being said, now, let's have some discussion, starting with Commissioner Ross.
No, nothing to say.
Commissioner Gromman.
Write that down somewhere.
Yeah, I know, I was waiting. Mark the time. So.
I have nothing to say either, but I support the applicant's modifications and changes with regards to the proposed application.
Commissioner Hayden, do you have anything?
No, nothing.
Commissioner Searle? Commissioner Ross?
Yes, I support the applicant's suggestion on this. And again, we've heard so many applications and seen projects built, and have understood the Lake Worth Road Coalition and the communities in that group and their concerns. So, to see consensus on this is rewarding.
I don't have any comments. Commissioner Stopek?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion, as Mr. Gromman's motion is more succinct.
Fair enough. We only have one motion. Commissioner Vineker?
No, no comments.
Commissioner Van? Oh, she's not here? I can't see her. You're sitting in front of her chair. Commissioner Ferguson? Okay, Commissioner, okay, let's have a roll call.
Barbara Ross?
Yes.
Laurie Vineker?
Yes.
Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
Yes.
Green Goman? Glenn Gromman?
Yes.
Carly Harper Larson?
Yes.
Hi, Ms. Harper Larson.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
Yes.
Edwin Ferguson?
Yes.
Jay Nisberg?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next matter, we're moving on to.
Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you. Thank you. Item 3A4, let's hear from the petitioner.
My name is Jennifer Morton with J. Morton Planning and Landscape Architecture, and I'm here today to request approval on the BBX Park at Delray. This is the last commerce request. That's part of Amendment Round 23A. You heard four requests last month, and this is the fifth application. We will be presenting this to the Board of County Commissioners on November 28th for transmittal. I have a brief presentation prepared. Again, we're requesting a land use change from AGR to commerce. The subject property is known as the Mulva Hill Nursery Property. It's a 40-acre site on the east side of State Road 7. Just to orient everyone to the property, it's located about three-fourths of a mile north of Atlantic Avenue, and about that same distance from the solid waste transfer station. The Piero Farms Packing Facility is on the west side of the road. As you look at the detail of the area and some of the surrounding uses, the land uses that surround this property are all AGR. To the north of us is land owned by Palm Beach County designated for preservation. To the east of us is a landscape services company. Then, south of us is Happy Hollow Road, and on the south side of Happy Hollow Road, we have two residential homes, and then, we have two landscape services industries. Then, if you look at the west side of State Road 7, we have the Piero Farms Packing Facility, as well as the FPNL Service Center. So, I'm just going to touch base on the history of commerce. And our office filed the first request, which was filed in 2016, to request a light industrial land use change in the ag reserve. It was the Homrich Nursery Property. Staff recommended denial. The board approved the project, and it was adopted in 2016. The next one to come forward was Sunflower, again, requesting light industrial. Staff recommended denial. They had not received direction from the board on these light industrial land use requests. The board ultimately recommended approval and adopted it in July of 2021. The third one to come through was LAS Farms, again, requesting a light industrial land use category. Again, staff recommended denial. They had not received any direction from the Board of County Commissioners on light industrial in the ag reserve. So, after LAS Farms was approved by the board, staff came forward with commerce language to address the light industrial category in the ag reserve. That language was vetted at a transmittal hearing, and again, presented at adoption hearing with additional changes. So, what was the criteria that was established by the Board of County Commissioners, working with staff, that it has been adopted? They had five criteria. The first one, that you could no longer request industrial as a land use designation. Instead, you were to request a lighter, what they call commerce, which was a light industrial category. The proposed application has requested that, that land use category. They also were very specific on the location for commerce. The board supported the staff's recommendation of projects that had frontage in access on State Road 7, Atlantic Avenue, and Boynton Beach Boulevard. They made a correction to the State Road 7 location criteria that had to be north of Rio Grande Avenue. Our project and our request has frontage in access on State Road 7. We comply with that criteria. The third criteria was relative to a requirement to submit a concurrent zoning application. We submitted a concurrent zoning application on October 19th. The fourth item addressed size of these parcels. The original staff recommendation was to allow commerce on parcels in size from three acres, or actually, it was five acres, to 16 acres. At the transmittal hearing, the board made changes. They recommended a minimum size of three acres and a maximum size of 50 acres. We are, our subject property is 40 acres in size. Again, complies with this criteria. And the last item is regarding preservation. The original language at transmittal actually did not require any preservation for these commerce land use, for the commerce land use category. When it came back for adoption, the board modified that. The board exempted the first 16 acres from a preservation requirement, and then, required 40% preservation on the remained, remaining land. Again, we're proposing to develop. According to this provision, it would be 29 acres of development and eight, just under nine acres of preserve. You know, you've probably seen this graphic before. This is the State Road 7 corridor, and I think the board chose this corridor for a reason. Not only are there various industrial and commercial and institutional uses up and down the State Road corridor that have those land use designations, but there are also uses along that corridor that maybe don't have a commercial land use designation, but really function as a commercial use. The Four Points Market is an example. We get asked this question a lot. Well, what are, who are the users that are going to be utilizing this commerce use? So, we spoke with our client, and a lot of the medical supply companies utilize these facilities to support the area hospitals. In fact, vaccine and other critical pharmaceuticals are now required to be backstopped, and they're stored in these areas. This is a list on the screen of those potential users. As far as consistency with the comprehensive plan, we meet the criteria of the comprehensive plan that the Board of County Commissioners established for commerce. We're also consistent with the ag reserve tier. The proposed light industrial uses that would be located on these facilities will serve the residents, they will serve the businesses, they will serve the schools, they'll serve the hospital, and they'll serve other uses within the ag reserve. Compatibility. The commerce future land use has been determined to be compatible with AGR land uses. That was reflected in the LAS Farms, the Sunflower, and the Homrich Nursery, all surrounded by AGR. There are no overlays or plans or studies for this area. And finally, the public facilities and service impacts. We meet the public service policies, traffic, water, sewer, environmental. The question about fire rescue, there are two proposed new fire stations identified for this area of the ag reserve. And finally, in conclusion, we have recent board direction that they gave to staff and has been adopted in the comprehensive plan. The direction was regarding the location, the parcel size, and the requirement for preserve. The proposed commerce flu is appropriate for the property. The proposed commerce flu is compatible with the surrounding land uses, and the proposed commerce flu is consistent with past BCC light industrial land use approvals and recently adopted commerce language. That concludes my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morton. Can I have a staff presentation?
Is this still morning?
Nope.
Good afternoon, Travis Goodson for the Planning Division. This is State Road 7 Business Plaza or BBX. So, as Ms. Morton had indicated, this site is 40 acres total in size, fronting on State Road 7, but generally located on the north side of Happy Hollow Road, just east of Smith Sunday Road. They are requesting to amend the future land use designation from agricultural reserve to commerce with an underlying AGR. There is a concurrent rezoning application in process that includes the site plan. They're requesting a rezoning from agricultural reserve to multiple-use plan development. The preliminary site plan, the application was just submitted a couple of weeks ago in October, so it'll continue to be worked out through the DRO process concurrent with this future land use process. But it's currently proposing a mix of warehouse with accessory office component. So, the site is located roughly three-quarters of a mile north of an established industrial and commercial corridor along Atlantic Avenue, as this visual shows. The site's surrounded primarily by agricultural and low-density residential uses with an AGR future land use designation. To the north is county-owned preserve parcels under active agriculture. To the east are various agricultural uses, including nursery and landscape service, and that also includes sites to the south. To the west across State Road 7 is packing plant and lands associated with Pearl Farms, and you can see Palm Beach Downs further to the southwest. And then, further south of the site is the AGR PUD development for Seasons. And then, we'll show another aerial image, just a little bit of close-up with some of the details removed, to show the current wholesale nursery site situated on 40 acres. So, summarily, staff's assessment of the request has found the site is eligible to request the commerce or CMR designation, as it does meet the minimum policy requirements recently adopted by the board, including between three and 50 acres. Its location with frontage along State Road 7 and so forth. They are proposing the onsite preserve, as Ms. Morton mentioned, and has the concurrent zoning application in process. That said, however, the site's located predominantly in an agricultural and low-density residential area that is removed from other established industrial and commercial nodes in the tier. area that is removed from other established industrial and commercial nodes in the tier, notably that area south of this subject site at the intersection of State Road 7 and Atlantic Avenue. And so the request for commerce to support light industrial development, such as the proposed warehouses, is out of scale and character with the existing surrounding development pattern. And so as such, staff is recommending denial of the request. However, should this Commission move to support the request, staff is recommending that it be subject to two proposed conditions of approval. The first being limiting the square footage to 700,000 square feet of warehouse and 63,000 square feet of general accessory office. And that is to comply with traffic conditions, to ensure compliance with Policy 35D. And then the second condition, which I think you've seen on every application today, but notably with the four other applications requesting commerce in the Ag Reserve, it's to ensure that the proposed land use amendment, this application, is heard before the BCC at the same time as the zoning application, so that the zoning application, site plan, and the amendment get adopted and approved at the same day. So that'll conclude staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I have got, let's start, you want to start, we can start with you, Mr. Stupig. Commissioner Stupig has a question for staff.
Just real quick question, Chad. Within the 700,000 square foot limitation, are you also proposing a height restriction?
Not with the future land use application. That will, that's 35 feet is currently the maximum in the ULDC.
Okay. And the other question is, as far as ingress and egress, it's all off of State Road 7 there?
Both access points, according to the preliminary site plan, are off State Road 7, correct? There's no access proposed at this time to Happy Hollow Road.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Vineker.
Yes, can staff please provide the formula you used for the, to, for that 700,000 and the 63,000 square feet?
That's based on the gross acreage of 40 acres, so 40 acres times the 0.45 FAR. It nets you close to that number. However, the 700,000 with 63,000 square feet of office is based on equivalent number of traffic generating trips to comply with the traffic policy 35D.
What's the formula for that? Maybe Quasi could tell me?
Maybe.
For the trips? That square footage is based on the trips, correct?
It's based on, with the, the maximum they can do with 0.45 FAR is 784,000 on that site, but they will not meet Policy 3.5D with 784,000 of light industrial. So to limit them to Policy 3.5D, they will be constrained to 700,000 square foot of warehouse space. And do you want to know the formula for trips for the warehouse?
You explain the reason why you knocked it down to, from 784. I get it then. Thank you very much.
Sure.
Any other questions on this side? Commissioner Ferguson? Okay, moving on to Commissioner Roth.
Yes, please. Thank you to staff. You mentioned a concern that this might, might not serve local needs. I did note Ms. Morton's presentation, you know, mentioning some of the required and possible commercial uses, but staff seems to have a concern that it might be more of a regional draw, which was not supposed to be the intent in the Ag Reserve. Could someone address that, please? Is there any evidence of that or reason for that comment?
So in large part, it's due to the, because as you remember, last month, there were four different commerce, and this one kind of stands out in the size and scope of the project. And, you know, one of the fundamental objectives of the agricultural reserve tier is that uses are generally supposed to be tier-serving. And, you know, I do want to highlight, as both presentations have said, certainly the site is eligible to apply, but just like with other projects, both within this urban suburban tier, just because something can, you know, has the right to apply, doesn't always necessarily mean staff finds it appropriate, but a large part is the size and scope.
Is your concern about it being a larger draw?
Right.
The square footage?
Right.
Based on the square footage, the size? Thank you.
Commissioner Cyril, Commissioner Gorman.
A question for staff first. Explain to me how an MUPD would work with regard to this site. My understanding would be that be a commercial-only MUPD, because I, my understanding is that MUPD can have all sorts of uses.
MUPD is simply a multiple use plan development, but in the zoning world, it also could be if you have a project that's just sufficiently large enough. And the reason is it, it requires a more coordinated planned effort for like buffers, drainage, and so forth. So this could be an industrial MUPD, if you will.
Could there any, at any time, could this be somehow changed to residential or a mixed-use type of MUPD?
It would have a theoretical density because of the AGR land use. So if, for whatever reason, they didn't build that, they could come back and just be, it could be a future preserve for a PUD or whatever. The, the potential would be there.
Okay.
And we do allow for what we call, or we used to refer to as a double dip, where they could use both the density and the intensity. That is enshrined in the plan now that you can use both provisions.
Okay. Real quick question for the applicant, Jennifer. So I noticed that the site has like no, no direct access from State Road 7. So from a traffic perspective, are you going to build some kind of a bridge or what, what's the deal with that? And is there going to be a, is, and also maybe perhaps traffic addresses, is there going to be a write-in? Is there going to be a?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner. Yes, our only access is off of State Road, State Road 7. We have, our traffic engineer has had a preliminary meeting with FDOT. We have two access points on State Road 7. On the north end of the property, we're looking at a write-in, write-out only. On the south end of the property, we're looking at a write-in, write-out, and creating, creating a median cut for a left-in. So those are the two access points that have been preliminarily reviewed with, with FDOT. I would also like to mention, our entire team is here and can address any other questions.
Well, and my, my other question is, is that, so I'm assuming this is going to be some giant warehouse with, with, is it going to be, are you planning on doing multiple buildings? Do you plan on making, building it out of tilt wall?
I'm not sure the construction, but it is proposed to be multiple buildings, three.
And are you, are you going to do, so I understand that there, that there's a 35-foot height restriction. Is that sufficient for you to have ESVR sprinkler-type systems in there? Is that something that you're going to put in there, or what's your minimum height on that?
Well, the height, actually, the code has a 35-foot height, but as you increase setbacks, it does allow the building height to go up. I don't know what that maximum height is at this time, but as we develop the site plan, I can get back to you. I know the projects that we're working on down on Atlantic Avenue are between 38 and 32 interior roof height.
Okay, and then?
Oh.
Okay.
And this is our architect.
Hi, Ray Gomez with Ware Malcolm. The clear height interior will be 32 feet. It will be a tilt-up construction with steel bar joists, to answer your other question. The maximum height, if we, it will probably be no more than 45 feet at the highest parapet.
And ESVR?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we're under 40, yeah.
Okay. And would you have any, I mean, I don't know that we can do that here, it's appropriate, but do you intend to have the office part of this building front State Road 7, or is it, you know, it would probably look nicer, but I?
Right. We, we did a layout that is going to have all the truck course internal, so the perimeter will always be the, with office locations. So some of them will face State Road 7, other ones might face the reserve, other ones might face the other properties.
Got it. Thanks so much for your time.
No problem.
Any further questions? Commissioner Roth.
A couple of questions. You had said that you're going simultaneously through a DRO process. Is there a site plan? Is there a site plan that we can look at?
We don't really look at site plans. There is a site plan in process through that, but it's?
Why, why can't we see it? I mean, we've seen it on past projects. As far as the site plan, I mean, I'd be interested, you know, are they actually going to build 763,000 square feet or what are, you know?
Well, there is a copy of the preliminary site plan that was submitted. It's the second-to-last page in your staff report packet, and that one is showing the proposed 670,000 square feet at this time.
I don't see it. It's, I don't think it's in our package. It's referenced as an Exhibit 10, but I don't think it's?
Yeah, so the copies or the staff reports that are mailed to you go through Exhibit 2. Otherwise, you would be getting like thousands of pages.
I got it.
But when we send out the digital version the week before, that is an exhibit in, in the digital version of the?
So is there any way staff can show us a copy of the site plan proposed?
Yeah, we'll work on getting a copy of it on the PowerPoint.
My next question is, my understanding is that it's supposed to be for the 40 acres, you know, anything over 16 acres, it's a 20, 40% preservation area, which would equal 16 acres. Jennifer Morton said that it was going to be 8.94 acres of preservation?
So with the preserve calculation, so when the Board adopted it, they exempted the first 16 acres from the calculation. So, so basically, it starts at 16 acres going up to the size of the property.
All right, they got us on that one. All right. Then the next thing is, as far as the user is concerned, is there a maximum square footage per user? Or could one user come in and ask to use that entire 763,000 square feet?
There is no restriction on individual tenant size. That's left to the property.
There are no restrictions. Oh, there she is. Okay, so, and there? Okay, State Road 7, okay. Wow, that's a big box. Okay, and so obviously, there's no preservation area on-site. That 8.94 acres is preservation off-site?
The southern portion.
Oh, that little tiny strip is?
No, that big giant rectangle is there.
That's not a building?
No.
No.
To the south.
Oh.
Yeah, that's close to 10 acres.
I'm sorry. I thought that was a piece of property next door. There we go. Oh, thank you for zooming in for the old people. I appreciate that very, very much. And as far as the maximum height, why, why do we have to go to 45 feet maximum height when we really try to keep a maximum height at 35 feet in the West Boynton area?
Here, let me, let me weigh in on that, because there's, there's a, a strange distinction that's made. In the zoning code, building height is, is effectively to the, where the roof is. But if you heard, the architect said he referenced the parapets maybe higher than up to 45 feet. So that's the part of the wall that projects above the plane of the roof, if you will.
Okay.
So that's the discrepancy in height. It may appear to be bulk or mass of the building, but it's not actually intensity of the building.
Okay, we're, we're good with parapets. It's just that square box that's 45,000 square feet. The other thing is, on the list of uses, one of the uses on the list was called furniture showroom. I, I mean, it's one thing to have a, a furniture warehouse, but a furniture showroom would be something that would bring the public into view, different kinds of furniture. Correct me again, since I'm obviously wrong.
Actually, that was probably not worded correctly, but it was used more for a industry where they have to repair the furniture, so they have a few pieces up front. And then in the back, they do the furniture repair, the upholstery. It's not a showroom like you go to Bears or, you know, something like that, so.
Right. And since I just am seeing the site plan for the first time, how many square feet are they actually proposing to build?
Well, we have about, I'm trying to look at the number. Can you zoom in on that square footage? What was it?
Okay.
672,000 square feet.
672,000. Okay, total square footage. All right, thank you very much.
All right, I have three public comment cards. Can I have Melissa McEwen at one? Brett Jelfomino? I apologize if I ruined your name, but I can't read what you wrote, so code to number two if you're here. And I have, after that, Jim Knight will be next. So let's start with number one. Actually, let's start with Ms. McEwen at number two.
Thank you. Hi, good morning, Melissa McEwen, 1270 South. No, I just moved, South East 14th Court Deerfield. My Uncle Joey is Mulvihill Nursery. This is, has been his nursery for many years. He's sick today, wasn't able to come, but if he were here, he would tell you he's tired and the nursery business sucks. We've been working with the county for a number of years for solutions for small property owners out in the Ag Reserve. You know, many of us bought before the Ag Reserve was created. This is the case for my family. So I'm hap, we're really grateful to be here and to find a solution that's suitable for my family, my uncle. So just, you know, commerce was created because it's, it's needed. I sat here today and watched over 1,300 homes be approved. And commerce, from my understanding, is the backbone of what, you know, people need outside of the house. We need businesses, we need essential services. Last week we heard, or last month, we heard about another couple smaller parcels. Now, this one's 40 acres. It's going to serve the community with different users. A lot of those other parcels coming in are just trying to be, comply with what they're already doing there. This will actually bring essential services to our Western community. This site is ideally located, we didn't talk about the transfer station. You can't see it on this map, but it's very close. My uncle was approached to have the transfer station there. So this has always been a site that's been looked at to be something someday. It's got the frontage on 441, it's got all the infrastructure there. You would expect to see something like this driving down 441 right there. You got Pero across the street that pretty much looks exactly the same, even though it's got the green overlay of the AGR. You got the transfer station down the street. You got the industrial along Atlantic Ave that probably will serve as more commercial once it actually is developed. So we need this, and there's only so many uncommitted parcels out there where something like this can go. And this is an ideal place for it. You know, with the large area, it's 40 acres, we do have the preserve. This is the first, I think the first industrial thing in Palm Beach County that's required to do a preserve. So it's something that also gives back and complements the Ag Reserve. It also is able to buffer itself from, you know, the low residential in the area. It'll also help the community because we're taking all those trip, traffic trucks up and down a dirt road of Happy Hollow, bringing them out where they should be on 441. Anyway, I think I said everything I had here, and my time is up, so thank you. We asked for your vote.
Mr., I apologize, I know your first name's Brett, but I even can't read your last name.
Jel Samino.
Jel Samino, thank you.
Good morning, Commissioner, staff. Brett Jel Samino, 4200 Southwest 131st Ave, Palm Beach County native, born and raised here, and have watched the, the Ag Reserve mature and evolve. And here we are discussing sort of the, the finishing touches and closing some loopholes in policy and, and code to address certain physical and locational obsolescences, as well as complete a very smart growth management plan and determine what is the fate of some of these remaining parcels. And I've watched the conversation about the essential housing in, uh, the Ag Reserve and sort of selectively identifying corridors that are appropriate for growth. And I've watched this one evolve as well, and I'm here to support this one. I, I don't support development just sort of at large in certain areas. I do believe in preservation and the preservation of the agricultural history and protecting, you know, the lower density. But this property fronts State Road 7, a very, very busy corridor. There's a unique opportunity here to address the owner's concerns, which seem to be surrounding the growing obsolescence of small farms and the difficulties in the nursery business, especially with environmental and labor challenges. And to be able to connect this property directly to state, the State Road, to provide 10 acres of private preservation, you're actually taking a 40-acre parcel that doesn't have any preservation and contributing and growing the preservation acreage within the Ag Reserve. I think this is smart growth management, and I support the project as proposed with the conditions.
Thank you very much, sir. Seeing no further comment cards, I'm going to close the public comment section. I'm sorry, Mr. Knight.
I can go back if you want.
You know, and I still have your, thank you very much.
Jim Knight, 740 Havana Drive. Congratulations, Chair, Vice Chair, and your new positions here. I think you've done a great job for your first hearing. I just wanted to point out a couple of things. Is there a way we could get the aerial that just shows the transfer station? By any chance, a little wider area out? Because that was something, that was an important thing to the county and so forth out here. And that's an industrial-type use that's right up the street here. And I believe when that came through, there was support by the staff as well as by this board, and of course, ultimately, the BCC. There are some. Yeah, so that's the transfer station. You can see that surrounded by agricultural uses there that the county actually owns and so forth. So it, it is appropriate coming off of 441. They were very, uh, and took care of the neighbors. That's why I don't think you see anybody, neighbors here opposing the project. They actually put their entire buffer, which is 300 feet, on the south side of the property. So that separates them from the neighbors. And then when you add in the road, the dirt road that's there, it's about 350 feet. Well, that's over four and a half times this room here. Most of the buffers that we heard about today were 20 feet, 50 feet. 300 feet's very significant. And I would appreciate your support for this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Knight. Now I have no further comment cards. We can open it up for discussion and a motion.
I'd like to move to approve subject to staff's recommendations.
Commissioner Ross, you had a comment?
I have a question. Did the transfer station have to go through an approval?
Hold on a second, I apologize. I've been corrected and they're correct. I need a second for that motion. Second? Commissioner Stopek seconds. Now Commissioner Ross, sorry.
Does the transfer station need an approval? Or did that just decide to be a site that was going to happen?
It was, it did go through land use amendment process back in 2005 to utilities and transportation. It had been a preserve, it had to be swapped out.
Because it wasn't preserved, but not because it was a utility?
Well, no, and then ultimately to, to authorize that use there, because the transfer station is not usually something you would allow in, in ag zoning. So it got the appropriate land use and then zoning approval back in 2005.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question for the parliamentarian. I need to step away with it. Is it poss, I believe the rules allow me to pass my vote via proxy to one of the other commissioners. Is that permitted?
I haven't heard that one before.
We still have a quorum. If you have to go, you gotta go.
Yeah, I mean, we would still have.
My question is specific to passing it.
I, I can't tell you offhand. I would have to do some research into that. I, all I have is a cheat sheet here, so.
Okay.
The actual book is rather thick.
Imagine if you could pass your proxy, no one would show up but me.
Well, then you wouldn't have quorum, which would be slightly different. But at this point, I, I like to pass my pro, I like to have Commissioner Stopek vote on my behalf, but I need to step out for an appointment that was scheduled prior to.
I think we're fine with just you stepping out.
Okay, well.
We have enough.
You guys may not understand what I'm saying, but.
No, no, I, I understand what you're saying. I just don't know if it's proper.
You're voting to support the motion. Got it.
What if I accept this proxy and then we determine later, lead, change the outcome of the vote one way or the other?
No, why don't we, why don't we just keep it simple?
Okay.
Okay, and let everybody vote. If he's not here at the time they vote, that's fine. We'll just hold the vote.
Okay. All right, well, have a great weekend, everybody. Don't forget to vote. Take care.
Yeah, I also have a 1:30, so we gotta do something. Okay, so, moving on to comments.
Discussion. So real, real quick, um, this, this type of, of project and this type of, of, of a scenario is, is what we call critical infrastructure. Nothing works in a modern economy and a, and a modern, and a modern commercial environment without logistics, without storage, without warehouse space. You've heard about supply chain, and you've heard about, this, you might have heard about something called onshoring, where, where, where things are sort of brought, are being brought back from overseas. As far as the supply chain is concerned, I would much rather have whatever we need in our supply chain on State Road 7 rather than in New Jersey, you know, in Virginia, or, or for that matter, in California. So I think this is an appropriate project. And, and I don't, I don't think the applicant objects to the staff's recommendations because their actual size of the project is less than what the staff is, is recommending as far as what the maximum size is. So I fully support this project and tend to vote for it.
Thank you. Commissioner, any other comments?
Yeah, I have a comment. Yes, and the last, last month, we approved, denied one, recommended denial on one, approved three, and we lowered the square footage on those three. Because we didn't think that amount of square footage was that appropriate. This, here, this does appear to be a great amount of square footage, especially since the agriculture, the agricultural reserve, the uses would be up to 261,360 square feet as it stands now. But because I heard all of the arguments at the BCC, why they had determined this square footage and how they worked on the, the preserve, and this is coming through with preserve, so I'm going to go ahead and, and really, and support this, the motion to approve. With staff's, that is with staff's recommendation of 700 square feet of industrial and 63,000 square feet of the, of the commercial.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, then I'm going to ask, oh, sorry, did you have to say it like Commissioner Ross?
Yes, um, I'm confused. You made a motion to support staff recommendation, or you made a?
I'm sorry, I made a motion to approve subject to the staff recommendations. In the, in the staff report, it said, "Should you choose to approve, our recommendation is to limit the warehouse space to 700,000 square feet," I believe.
All right, that's why I was, because, okay, so.
So it would be a motion to approve based on the staff recommendations that are sub, that are presented in exhibit one of the staff report.
Yes, yeah, and just to, I see what you're saying, Dagmar. So staff's recommendation is denial. But as Mr. Gromit said, that should you recommend approval, then we would recommend subject to the conditions of approval as included in the staff report, just to clarify.
All right. This one, I do have something to say. You know, I understand the Commerce Center, and I understand, you know, trying to pull in some economic, you know, growth and employment centers into the Ag Reserve, you know, and, and as far as the, you know, and I really appreciate you bringing up the transfer station. If you were proposing square footage in something like the transfer station that that looks, man, I'd, I'd be all over that, Mr. Knight. So I don't understand the reference, why you would bring that up. Second of all, 441 being a busy corridor. 441 is a busy corridor in Wellington, and it's a busy corridor in, in Boca. But Wellington is not a busy corridor between, in, south of Atlantic Avenue and then north, you know, almost a hypoluxo road. So I don't, I don't think that's really a, a fair assumption, just to say, because it's there, it's a busy corridor, it is not. You know, I can understand the industrial, but 700,000 square feet in the Ag Reserve for industrial is obscene. Again, I feel there are uses that are needed, employment base that is needed. Again, staff's comment was, the Ag Reserve is to service the residents of the Ag Reserve and agriculture. This goes way above and beyond supporting the residents in the Ag Reserve or agriculture. I mean, and also, there was a reference to say, you know, farmers don't really make a lot of money, so, you know, we need employment opportunities for them to have a second job, okay? BS, that, that's, that's just not reality. I just, I don't have a problem with it being commerce, but for them to put in those huge boxes like that in the Ag Reserve, even though it is a permitted use, it's too big. It goes above and beyond. It does attract regional users. It's too big. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further comments, can we call the roll?
Barbara Roth?
No.
Laura Vinecker?
Yes.
Spencer Siegel?
Yes.
Dagmar Braas?
No.
Glenn Gromen?
Yes.
Carly Harper Larson?
Yes.
Marcia Hayden?
Yes.
Rick Stopek?
Yes.
David Searle?
No.
Jay Nisberg?
Yes.
Curious. Passes?
Passes 7 to 3.
Thank you. Moving on to other business, commission members, if you have any brief updates before we move on? Comments, updates, anything about going on? Okay, seeing none. Planning, Executive Director? At report, anything to say?
No, no comments.
Uh, County Attorney, anything to say?
No.
Okay. Land Director, anything to say?
Just one comment. So as you know, and this was four items, but sometimes our packets are, are really big and there's a lot of members. And since the packet is available digitally, what I was going to see if, would propose that we go to only digital, unless, if there are members that want a hard copy, absolutely, we will still do that mail out. But I can send out an email to all of you individually, and if you're comfortable with just the digital, then we'll do that. And if you still want a hard copy, then we'll, we'll still do that as well. But I will send out an email and for all.
Okay, and I'm, I'm just going to take my privilege. Is there any that we can limit how many hearings we're having? I mean, if, if they're going to take an hour apiece, and we're, got four, and we're all volunteers here, I mean, that, that some, it gets a little heavy sometimes. I mean, right now, I gotta leave, so, is there any way to do that?
The reason we can is because there's set Board of County Commissioner, Transmittal Hearings, Adoption Hearings, and then by law, they have to go to a local planning agency prior, so.
I was just trying to limit.
You know, right now, we have probably more future land use amendments in process than we've had. So that's why, right now, it's been a very, very hectic period.
Before we adjourn, thank you, everybody, for your volunteerism and for your time. Move to adjourn, anybody?
So moved.